Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the workshops for the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners for June 20th, 2023. This time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation and Commissioner Mollie to do the pledge, if y'all all stand. Thank you.
Most gracious in turn, Father God, we come now, God, this hour and this time. Lord, we thank you for how you have blessed us and watched over you, take care of us day by day. We thank you, dear God, for allowing us to God and make it safely here. We thank you, Father, for watching our families, our homes, and watch over us, dear God, on our jobs. We pray, oh, Father God, you continue to bless in this meeting, dear God, that we do the things that is pleasing your sight, oh, God. Pray, oh, God, that you look on bereaved families, dear God, that are going to bereavement. Give them strength on every leaning side, dear God. Hold them in heart by hand. And gracious, Father, we're so grateful and thank you for this day that you have blessed us, one we have seen today and never see before. In God, we thank in Christ, we pray. Amen.
My delegation is certified by the United States of America and the Republic of which is saying, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just as far."
Let's start off with item number one, discuss solid waste services and assessments. I'm not sure where you want to go with this, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Chairman, we got John Locklear and his team with Locklear and Associates to do a presentation for us.
Mr. Locklear.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, audience. If anyone doesn't have a copy of this, a hard copy that you'd like, my team right here can get you one, so just let them know.
Does anybody need a copy?
No. Looks like we're good. Okay. Well, as Mr. Scott said, my name is John Locklear, and I'm the owner of Locklear and Associates, where you're a solid waste consultant, have been since 2019. We were tasked about a month ago by Mr. Scott to put together a presentation to take a holistic look at your solid waste management program. And that's what we've brought to you today. We work with Mr. Rafferty, Mr. Scott, and my whole team here. They don't like the spotlight, so I won't call them out. A couple of them will turn red face, so I won't do that to them.
Don't feel bad. I got a fan under here.
Yeah. Let me just say that this is a very loose presentation, so if you have a question as I'm going along, please stop me. It's nothing formal. I don't have all the answers to every question, but I'll do my best to answer them or get the answers for you.
What are we paying you for?
Just to sit up here and look pretty, right? How am I doing so far?
Failing.
Oh, dang it. Right. All right. So if you will click that. So this is just a brief outline of what we're going to talk about today. And again, just to point out something I'm sure you are all very aware of, you know, there's three components primarily to solid waste. There's the collection of the waste, the hauling of the waste, and the disposal of the waste. And those three are very interrelated. What you do with one can dictate what you do with the other and so forth. So when I talk about each one, I'm going to talk about them in order, but just be well aware that your decision in one category might change your decision in another. So I want to kind of bring that to your attention. And so in waste collection, if you go a couple more for me here, this one. Right now, the county has collection centers, and we're going to get to where those are, spread throughout the county, predominantly focused, you know, as is normal, where the center of population is, near Live Oak, with some outliers around the perimeter of the county. And then, of course, you have the transfer station, which we'll talk about later, just south of the city. And then, in some cases right now, in commercial waste, you have private vendors, direct hauling out of county, so it doesn't come to your collection center or to your transfer station. So that's kind of how it works right now. If you click to this one. So right now, you have about 120 leased cans in circulation. Their intent is to primarily be commercial. However, we have been seeing some situations where communities are coming together and getting a can for the neighborhood kind of thing, which, you know, go to bed, there's some financial implications on that assessment versus the can. But that's something we can look at. I think the one I really want to look at is the next one, and that's this map. And so one of the things that staff and my team, you know, tried to take a good look at was efficiency. Are your collection centers located well? Could there be some consolidation? Do we need more in certain areas? Need to delete some in others? And, you know, that question right there really is tied to what we're going to talk about later in terms of disposal. So, for example, if you had a landfill on the north side of the county, outside of the county, it might make more sense in some cases to haul directly from a collection center to that facility, as opposed to going all the way to the south of the city to the transfer station, which is what happens now, and then going back to the north. So we looked at that, and then, you know, there are always political considerations for where collection sites are and that sort of thing, but you need to bear in mind that there's a pretty significant expense for each collection center because it's manned. And so, you know, we've worked with Dennis to kind of figure out, you know, what I've gleaned from him is that every collection center is full on Monday mornings, which is not uncommon. People come on the weekend, they drop off their waste, and they've figured out already how many cans are necessary at each of those facilities. So that's a good question that's already answered. The next step in that process would be to determine, okay, if we change up the how we collect it, and I'm going to get to that in a second, if we had compacters, for example, could we, instead of having two facilities that are, you know, six miles apart, could we have one that could collect the same amount of waste as both of those facilities? And so that's really the next step in this process would be to look at the maximization of your staffing and your costs relative to waste. So your cost per ton would go down in terms of handling collection. If you'll click to the next one, I actually want to, let's just skip, you guys know all about the decals, you've talked that to death, I don't think I really need to go over that. But if you go to the next one, this one, right now, as I said, you've got roll-off dumpsters at each one of the collection centers. The biggest change you can make would be to bring in compacters. And the reason is, is just the density of the waste is very low. I mean, yeah, very low density when it's just dropped into a container and collected. So if you actually go to the next slide, this is where we get to the meat of the equation here, looking at compacters. And, you know, you can get compacters at varying sizes from 16 to 40 yards. Prices, I actually, hot off the presses, have an actual quote for, I believe it's 38?
40.
40 yarders, but how many of them? 38 of them, I think?
28.
28. So 28. You guys do this math for me. So the total is about 1.3 million. So do a per one for me, that, real quick. But here's the benefit of a compactor, is in a 40-yard compactor, you basically have a four-to-one compaction rate. So I'm going to get, I'm going to get 160 cubic yards of waste in a compactor versus 40 yards in a 40-yard roll-off container. So now, instead of making four trips with a haul truck, I can make one. So that's a huge savings. And so I think, and we didn't have time to do this calculation for this presentation, but the calculation that I would recommend is, is that we look at the tonnages, and we don't have that, the reason we don't have that number is because that, historically, we don't take the waste from each collection center and weigh it and have a record of that. We have a sort of ad hoc, you know, hey, it's full, and it's half-full or whatever, which works great for efficiency under the current system. But if you want to move to a compactor, then I would suggest we look at weighing it over some period of time so we can get an average of how much is going through there, and then is it worth, is it worth having a compactor? Because if I don't have enough waste to get this benefit, this density benefit, then maybe it's not. What would it be if I combined two sites together? So that's really the next thing that I would recommend, is we start looking at tracking the actual tonnages from each collection center so we can have some good math. Because I don't want to, I don't want to pay, how much is it per? $48,000 for a 40-yard compactor, and then it sits half-full, you know, when they come to pick it up. Now, you could tweak that with the, there are some rules, though, of how long that waste can stay on-site at the collection center, so it's not like I can just let it sit for a month and let it till it fills up. I've got to get it out in seven days. So in essence, what you're looking at is, do I generate enough waste at this collection center to warrant, to get the benefit of a compactor, the cost of it? So I can look at my return on investment, how quickly am I going to pay off through saved trips to pay off that compactor? So that would probably be number one recommendation for you on the collection side.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Locklear, is that something that Mr. Rafferty can, I mean, over the next, say, July 1 through July 31, do a, I mean, I know logistically it'll be kind of a pain because the truck's going to have to empty a site and then go all the way to the scales and then go back.
Correct.
So, I mean, but could we suffer through that for 30 days to see what the tonnage was for each site? So we know which ones may need to be consolidated, or which ones warrant?
Right. Mr. Chair.
The 48,000-yard compactor.
Mr. Land, that is exactly what I would recommend, and it is going to be a pain. It is going to increase your time and cost over that period that you're looking at. I would say at least a month, given that July has a lot of visitors, and, you know, it might be a little bit different than normal, I don't know. But, yeah, I would say at least a month, I would do that.
Could we not just get a set of lease, a set of portable scales and put there?
Could do that, but, but, I mean, would you guys be able to do that?
That would be easy.
Yeah, it would be easier.
It would work still.
It would save time. Maybe just have to have somebody going around with them.
Lot quicker, too.
Yeah, it would. Yeah, that's not a bad idea, actually, so. Yeah, and that's really the data we have to have so that we can, you know, definitively say, yes, a compactor would cost this much, and it would save this many trips, and it would be paid off in X years, which is what you want to know. What's the life of the compactor versus how long is it going to take to pay it off? So, right now, I can't answer that question.
I don't know how we implement that sooner than later, but, I mean, you're not going to know which site, sites to tackle first until you know which one of your bigger ones, you know, your tonnage are.
And, Mr. Chairman, that data would also help to really figure out if you want to consolidate or not.
Yeah, because you may have to put two sites together.
Correct.
To make it.
To make it efficient. Yes, correct. And then that gets.
And that cuts calls some more.
Exactly. Right. So there are those considerations. And then there's also the political considerations of people losing a service that they're used to right next to their house or whatever, so.
We're giving them your number.
At least it's going to handle those calls. All right. So that's, yeah, that would be my number one recommendation to the board, because that's data we don't have, and so I can't say to you, yes, you should do this, this, and this, right now. But with the data you just described, I think we can definitively say, hey, you should, here's the sites you should close and consolidate or not, I mean, maybe there aren't any, and here are the sites that warrant a compactor, and here are the ones that don't. I mean, that, that would be an easy thing to do, once I have that data.
I know you don't have any data, but you're saying it's going to be a mix. You don't think, oh, going to all compacters is the way to go, or?
Probably not.
So you're going to still have to operate transfer stations, what I'm getting at?
Well, and you may still operate it even with compacters, so depending upon where you dispose. So, for example, and I'm getting ahead of myself, but let's say, let's say I was going to take it, let's say ultimately you choose to take it to somewhere like Osilla or Columbia County, somewhere just north of here, then it makes total sense to not double-handle it, to get in that compactor from the north side of the county, go straight to that landfill, boom, you're done.
Direct haul.
Whereas if it's somewhere further away, then you're going to bring that and put it at the transfer station for a long-haul trailer. I mean, it just, and that's why I said at the beginning, it sort of depends, you know, it's not the cart and the horse, they're really interrelated, so. But at least we would know on a pure collection side, regardless of where we take it, once it's collected, we still should know, do we need to consolidate or not, and do we want compacters everywhere or not? And then we step to the next question of, where's it going? And how do I handle it from there? So.
So your $1.3 million deal there, that was for?
That was for 28 40-yard compacters.
28.
And that would put it at every facility?
Yes. Two per facility?
Two per facility.
That's installation.
That's the install, yeah, it's an actual quote, which is really hard to get.
But that doesn't include a roll-off truck to haul it with or freight or any of that?
Correct. Exactly. There's additional cost. Yep. Yeah, all of that. So we could, while we're collecting that data, you know, hunt down what you just described and try to get a better number, and I think we should. But, yeah, a month should give us enough time to track that down. So, okay. So, the next one is about your recycling, doing about 26,000 tons per year. I don't have a whole lot to say on this one unless you have something specific, but, you know, it's, it's, the recycling market is tough, especially with a small quantity of materials. I think y'all are doing about the best you possibly can right now, to be honest with you. I don't think it's, I don't think the recycling component would change anything we're talking about with your waste decisions. So I just wanted to throw it in there. It's done. You're doing a good job. I don't think there's a lot you can do to improve it, quite frankly, not for any economical value. All right. So, any questions on the collection side? If not, I'm going to move really towards the, I mean, it still says waste collection, but now we're starting to talk about a little something different. So if you go to the transfer station one, so a little bit about your transfer station, you've all been there, you're all aware of it. It was built in 2002. It's sized, operated about 250 tons per day. It generally does around 120 average, but, that's an average. Monday morning, it's jam-packed from all, like I said, all the collection centers. That's when you get a big slug of waste in there. And they got to work real hard to process that because you can't have it outside, you know. So for that one peak moment, it'd be a heck of a lot better if the thing was bigger, but it's not. But that's just something to consider, because as you keep growing, that problem's only going to get bigger, if you stay with the status quo of what's happening right now. So that's just something else to factor in. Another thing to factor in is the life of that facility, structurally, you know, I mean, it could last longer, could last less. It's got 11 years of light design life left. So that's not that long. Those things are running, you know, six, seven, eight million dollars for a new one. So that could also factor into your decision about what you're going to do. And, you know, when you think holistically, and we'll get to where the potential other facilities are for disposal, they're all in the north, you know, and your facility's on the south side of the county. So, you know, hopefully, I'll be retired by then, but when you need a new one, we put it up on the north side of town, you know. But that's, hopefully, that's for somebody else to deal with. But at any rate, just wanted to kind of give you a heads-up that, hey, you know, you got to keep in the back of your mind, you know, how long the life that's got, and that it's getting about maxed out on that peak day in terms of floor space. So there could come a time where we'd need to build a little extension, at least on the roof and the containment walls of the floor. So I don't think we're quite there yet, but not too far off, so.
Mr. Chairman, while we're talking about transfer stations, I'll just make a quick point. I know that budget time is here as we're going through that process. Overtime is always a concern. Because of the size of the building for the transfer station, like John mentioned, that Dennis, his team has to get the product out, it can't be stored outside of the building. So we have overtime because of that big rush on Monday, Tuesday, trying to get that in. But that's the reason why he and I are working on, what can we do scheduling-wise to make it look a little bit different? But that's the why behind the numbers sometimes.
Well, and if you went to the compacters, some direct haul out of that, too, would lighten the load.
Change that.
On the transfer station. Well, I just did a little quick math. You said $6 to $8 million to build a new transfer station? That's about $250,000 a year for what that cost, just to replace it.
And as you know, everything's getting more expensive by the day, so.
That's today.
You're right. So now, let's talk a little bit about what you just mentioned, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You mentioned the, what'd it say, 1.3 on the compacters?
Yes.
1.3 on those. And what's the normal lifespan on one of those compacters?
It depends on the frequency of use, but, you know, they'll last like 20 years if they're not too heavily used, but.
Again, like you just referred to, I mean, you start putting a few of those here and there, that cuts down on how long it's been in that building.
1.3 saves you six.
That's right. Yep. And it lasts 20 years. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one question that I had regarding that as well. What's the maintenance contract with those that tags along with?
I don't have that. We just literally got the purchase price literally yesterday afternoon, but we can track that down. If my team would make a note of that, we'll find that out.
I know there's been a time or two that I've been, we've had to go out and make repairs to that thing, concrete and some other things, and it's, it's pretty pricey.
No, I was talking about the compactor.
The compactor itself, yeah.
If we get the compacters, just while we're thinking about costs to be included, it would be.
Absolutely. We will, we will get that information before the next meeting, that we're a month from now or whenever it is. If you would just go, so now we're, you know, you mentioned a few minutes ago, Mr. Chair, about, and Mr. Hale, about, you know, direct haul, saving some monies and some space and time. So now, we try to take a look at, well, what are your, now we're kind of bleeding into the hauling cost, and if you were to haul out of county from the transfer station, if you'll go to this slide for me. And this might be a little difficult to read, it's pretty small. In fact, I might have to get my glass. What we did on this one is, we took a look at your current contract for hauling, which goes to Cheshire Island, and that distance of 97 miles, and then we looked at your per ton hauling cost, and then came up with a per ton mile, or per ton, yeah, per mile ton, however you want to say it, cost. And then we looked at your three closest possible disposal options, at least, you know, conceptually, and what that would cost. Now, you know, understand that that per mile-ton rate would change, you know, we're just extrapolating, it wouldn't be this exactly, but we use this as at least some general concept. So, you know, you're looking at $27 a ton right now, and then basically, the New River landfill in Rayford and the Osilla landfill in Greenville is going to be $15, $16 a ton in hauling, and then the Windfield facility in Columbia would be about nine. Now, like I said, it'd probably be a little more than that, because, you know, it doesn't quite work out one-to-one when you're doing that math, but it gives you an idea that you can save a significant amount of money in hauling by finding a closer facility. So, and then we get into this one here. Oh, yeah, I don't know how, what happened to that? Oh, I flipped, about this one. And I think you guys, about a year ago, I think I was up here talking to most of you. And one of the things that came up afterwards was, should the county be in the business of hauling waste to the disposal facility yourselves? I don't think that ever went anywhere at this point, but that's essentially the question or the options that you'd have before you, regardless of where it goes ultimately, that you could put out a bid and hire a contractor, like you do now, to haul it, or you could get into the business yourself of hauling it. So, for example, Dixie County, they're one of the four members of the Osilla Solid Waste Authority, and they're the furthest from the landfill, and they do their own hauling, and they have for many years, and it has been very economical for them. Now, I'm not saying that's the right choice for you guys, but again, it would certainly be wise, and I think it's a little early to make this determination, but you would be wise to do both, to bid it out and see what it would cost you, but also get bids to buy the equipment, what would your staffing need to look like, et cetera, and do a comparative analysis of bids versus your price. Since we don't know where you're going yet, that's a bit early, but certainly, that would be a key step in the decision-making process. And that, you know, you could conceivably, you know, I don't know where you're going, if you're going anywhere different, but as you're making that decision of where to dispose, certainly the hauling has to come into play, so we could do, you know, a disposal analysis combined with a hauling analysis at that time, so you can make a complete decision. So, any questions on hauling? And I'll get an, if not, I'll move on to disposal. This one right here. So, you know, we did our due diligence, and I know the board over the past few years has looked into different options and talked about different things. It essentially boils down to this, you know, right now, you're under contract with a private vendor to haul and dispose at Cheshire Island. I believe that contract, if I'm not mistaken, goes to 2026, and I think, as you are all aware, it escalates, has escalation in tip fee every year until the end of that term. Your options really boil down to these, and I'm going to talk about each one individually, but I'll list them here. You can own and operate your own landfill, which we talked about a year ago, and I'll get to that. You could engage in a new multi-county regional facility, not unlike an Osilla or a New River. You could negotiate something with the Osilla Solid Waste Authority. You can negotiate something with Columbia County, New River, or again, with a private contractor. So those are really your only viable options in terms of geography of where things are. And I'm not saying that any of these entities will say yay or nay to, you know, having you at all, I don't know, but those are what the options would be. So I'll be very quick about this one. I think most of you were here last year when I presented a workshop, not unlike this. You had us do a 20-year pro forma on what a new Class 1 facility owned and operated by Swanee County would look like. Didn't look good. Bottom line was, your per-ton cost would be two to five times more than what they are now, and you would need to really triple your waste tonnages at a minimum to make it an economically viable system. And that's a pretty standard rule of thumb in the industry, and Florida's need about 500 tons a day to break even, and that's cutting it close. So definitely not something, I told you a year ago, I said, I don't recommend you do that, and that's still my recommendation to you today, is that's not something that makes sense from a business perspective. The next one, and I think you guys have all seen the picture where the landfill, you know, we looked at it going out by the old landfill and all that, you know, it was a pretty thorough report. If you'd like a copy, you want to see it again, I'm happy to give it to you. But I think, I think the summary is all you really need. Your next opportunity would be the Osilla Area Regional Landfill. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it. It's a facility located in Greenville. It's a four-county regional facility, Madison, Taylor, Jefferson, and Dixie, opened in 1993. And I don't know, you guys may be aware or not, so rewind back to like 1990, there was a pretty robust discussion about a regional facility, it was going to be 13 counties, including Swanee County, for a regional landfill. Different things happened politically, and it broke apart, and that, you guys fell out, and then Osilla and New River kind of picked up the pieces here and here, and that's what was left. So this isn't the first time this topic has been brought up. It was when I was still in high school, it was discussed, so. We had a conversation with Osilla about their interest in having conversations with the board, or your representatives, and they, a year or two ago, they would have said, no, thank you, but the board's position has changed, the Osilla board's position has changed. In fact, about a year ago, they started taking Lafayette County's waste, and that's worked out very well for both parties. So your options there, you know, from least preferred in your perspective to best would be, you could just be a customer at their current gate rate, which is about $43 a ton, which, not good. You could discuss with them about being a preferred customer, like a long-term deal, negotiate a lower tip fee for a longer, you know, guaranteed time period, which I think they're amenable to. And then, you know, the top tier in your mind would be to become a member, which I don't know how interested they would be, but I can tell you, if I were in their shoes, I would certainly, at a minimum, expect that you would, Swanee County or any new potential member, would come to the table with a whole lot of money because of the infrastructure that I've already built and paid for. So you're not just buying into new airspace, you're paying for stuff they already paid for. So there'd be a pretty good chunk of change. Now, I'm not an attorney, I don't know, you know, that kind of, those kind of legal arrangements. arrangements, but just keep that in the back of your mind, that you couldn't just say, hey, we want to be a partner, and, and they'd say, alright, come on. I don't know, that's, you're going to have to come with millions of dollars, quite frankly, just for the infrastructure. And that's if they even want you. Don't know. Columbia County landfill, that's up in Winfield, just, just north of Lake City. Right now, that is not a regional facility, it's just a county-owned and operated Class 1 and Class 3 facility. Again, I don't know anything about their willingness to do anything with you, but certainly you could be a customer, but the tip fee is too high, you wouldn't just go as a customer. Could you discuss some sort of preferred customer situation? Maybe. It is, as you saw on the previous slide, the closest to you, so from an economic perspective of hauling, that would be great, but again, I don't know the temperature of the room over there as to whether or not they would entertain discussions with another county. Whereas, you know, Osilla, at least, it's already a four-member entity, so that, so that might be a little easier. The New River Regional Landfill up in Rayford, that one is, is a three-county, Union, Baker, Bradford. They have long had Alachua County as a customer, for decades, which is nice, because they, they can bring down their member county tip fees significantly by having a, a preferred customer like Alachua. I did reach out to them, and I have not gotten a response back from three messages, so take that for what it's worth. I don't know if they just don't like me, or just don't have the interest, I don't know. But they're not unlike Osilla in their setup, their arrangement. We already know they take other counties. They did not take Alachua or anyone else as a member partner, but as a preferred customer. So my inkling would be that they, that's what they would probably be willing to at least discuss, but again, I don't have any information because they didn't come back. And then finally, you know, your, your last option would be, or first option, whatever you want to call it, would be to bid it out again. You know, last time, we were caught kind of flat-footed, saw our rates go up dramatically from our old, really, really good contract that you had, to one that wasn't as good. So, you might be in the same boat, I don't know, and you don't know, and we won't know until we put it out to bid. I will say though, that, and this is just my own opinion, exploring all the other previous options I just mentioned, would seem to me to put you in a better bargaining position with any vendor, knowing that they know that you have other options on the table. So it'd make a bit more competitive situation, in my opinion. Just, just my two cents. So, that concludes what I had prepared for you, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
So I guess going, I'm sorry, I guess going forward, you and Mr. Scott will work out what kind of information you need together to, to make, make these decisions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think, I think one thing that, I, I don't want to waste money, and, and a lot of it really boils down to where it's going to go. So, you know, we can do some things where we're looking at it where it could go to multiple places, but they would change dramatically depending upon where it goes. I think it would be prudent to at least start having some discussions, some further discussions with the entities that I listed, to, to see, okay, is, you know, oh, and you know what, I think I skipped one, I think, I think I skipped one. A brand-new regional facility, if you had some partners, not Osilla, not New River, that wanted to do one together, that's another option for you. That's difficult, I think I told you a year ago, that's not easy.
Well, who's left that's not in one already?
Well, I mean, you're looking a little, so you're, I mean, Columbia's not in one, they have their own facility, so I mean, would they be interested in one? I don't know. Hamilton County, they haul up to, same place yours goes. You'd have, let's see.
Madison.
Gilchrist, where Madison's already at, Osilla. You'd have Gilchrist, Levy already goes to Osilla.
Probably can sway Lafayette if you.
You could, potentially, yeah, yeah. So you got about four or five, but they're all sort of all over the place, too.
Wouldn't it take about all of them to make that viable?
It'd take all of them to get up to a number that would make it work, yeah. And, and the kicker would be, I think if you didn't have Columbia, it wouldn't work. So if Columbia doesn't have any interest in it because they already have their own, then I think it's a no-go. But it's certainly worth talking to every entity to say, hey, do you have any interest in this? If they say no, then, you know, and particularly if we start with Columbia and they say no, then maybe you don't waste your time talking to the others, but I think we need to have concurrent conversations going with, with different entities to, to just take the temperature of what it is they're willing to, to at least talk about or not, so we can start crossing off the list, you know, New River doesn't want us at all, or they only want us as a customer, you know, what can we, what can we expect those rates might look like? Same with every other facility is, you know, what, what are our options? What are available to us at that facility? Is there a chance we become a member? If we did, what would it cost? Now, that's a big question for them to come up with a number, but it's, it's where I think you have, so we need to be doing that while we're looking at the collection, while we're looking at, you know, consolidating, compactor, so all of those things, because as I said, it's just all a big mixture that's interrelated. And so I kind of start to need to know, hey, that's off the table, let's focus on these two. Or, no, that's still in play, I need to put that in the equation. And this, this is a big, lot of spinning plates. It's not an easy thing to say, hey, you should do this, this and this. So, I think it's a multi-month, and it may even be conversations that, Mr. Chair, you or one of your designees needs to have with these other government entities. They may be more willing to tell you definitively than they would me, for example, as, as your representative, but, I mean, I'm happy to go, I can at least start the conversation. But I would say at some point, it would probably make very good sense for you or your designee to be at their board meetings, and while you have the board there, say, hey, we'd like to start talking, what are you, what are your thoughts? That's what I would do.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lynn.
If y'all remember, I mean, Commissioner Perkins and Commissioner Malley were on the board, but we had the same discussion two years ago. We knew that the rate that we had for the next two years was, was solid, but we're at the turning point now where it's not so solid. I mean, I'm ready for us to come up with a plan, let's do something. I mean, we've kicked the can down the road long enough, as the old saying goes. I, I would, I would, and I don't know what all we can do in a workshop, but my comments would be, hey, let's, let's get Mr. Scott and Mr. Rafferty on board to, to figure out a plan on weighing the tonnage at the collection sites, whether that's portable scales, whether that's having to logistically haul it, whatever that is, let's, let's tackle that. I mean, we need that, we need that tonnage to know about the compacters. I mean, we're not talking about a one-year fix, we're talking about a, probably a three-year fix. And then secondly, I mean, we're halfway, almost halfway through our current garbage contract, is, let's start looking at what's next. You know, if we, if we go back to bid, like Mr. Lockler said, we're just at the mercy of the market, I think, long-term. Some type of partnership or membership is going to be the best for taxpayers, to try to offset costs with other municipalities, myself, but, I mean, we need to, we just need to get going, we need to get something done, our plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hale.
And this may be for the attorney, or you may know, I know we're in a contract with those folks to 2026, like you said, but I, I've read that thing, and I don't remember seeing anything there that says we have to haul to them. I mean, we're just in a contract, can we be in two contracts without there being an issue? Like, because like you said, those last two years, that, that tip and fee, and that, that goes way up. Do we have to use them all the way through 2026? Can we go ahead, as Commissioner Lynn's suggesting?
I'll put in my non-attorney two cents, and then I'll defer to your attorney. So, I also read that many times over. It didn't have two things that waste disposal contracts typically have, a very specific put-or-pay clause, if you don't bring this here, you will pay us this.
Right.
And it, and it did not have a sliding scale. If you bring us less waste, per ton goes up. That's typically the two mechanisms that disposal facilities will use to keep you there. I didn't see either of those.
Nor did I.
Now, whether or not there's verbiage in there that, that I just am not familiar enough with, I would defer to your attorney. But that, that was my take, I agree with you.
Same as mine.
I didn't see anything in there that would preclude us from continuing to take some waste there, maybe direct hauling to somewhere else a portion of it. That, that was my interpretation.
Mr. Adam.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. And I, I know Mandy printed this out for everybody, or the packet for the commission, and I asked her to include the contract, I don't have the blow-up because it would be impossible for everybody to read, but the actual contract's included with your paperwork that Mandy got you, so I can kind of walk you through what the controlling language will be, and what we need to look at, and so, to put the issues on the table. And I may have some questions for you, because, and I don't mean to sound like I'm cross-examining you.
No, please.
But it'll be, the, the contract has certain definitions, and so you can tell us whether or not it's viable to work within this framework.
Okay.
So, if you look, if you get to the actual contract, the provisions we're going to want to look at is Section 8, where it says waste volume, if you guys will catch up, if you see where we're at. So, when you get there, you see under A, and this was one thing that I had written down to bring up, because one of the options that was on the table was the benefit that could be realized from not delivering it to the transfer facility. However, in this contract, we say explicitly, we, look at A, to the extent of all out, the county shall deliver or cause to be delivered acceptable waste within its lawful control to the transfer station. So, seems by contract, we've said we're going to do that. There's a but, and I'll get there in a moment. And then the other issue, assuming we wanted to move on having a third-party facility during the, the lifetime of this contract, if I were Waste Management's attorney who wanted to sue us to say, hey, bring us all your waste, I would prefer to Paragraph B there, which says that the county shall load the acceptable waste on vehicles provided by the operator, in which case this would be Waste Management, to deliver to the operator's facility or, for disposal, which doesn't give a whole lot of wiggle room as to what you're supposed to do with the waste. And a compliment to Mr. Pravat in negotiating the contract, if you, the, our get out of jail, I won't say free, but perhaps cheaper clause, is going to be Paragraph C and D. So, it says, notwithstanding, notwithstanding any other provision in this agreement, the county is not obligated to offer for disposal any minimum amount of solid waste, which brings your point before, that there's no minimum. And this is where kind of the definition game is going to come in, is when we get to Paragraph D here. And it says, notwithstanding any other provision of this agreement, the county may remove or divert solid waste from the county's waste stream for processing, waste reduction, including but not limited to removal of recovered materials, recyclable materials and organic materials. These activities may occur at the Swanee County Transfer Station or elsewhere. So, that's the clause that if we decide to do something else, the county is going to hang its hat on. So, and if you look at those two paragraphs between A and D, you're going to see two different terms used referring to garbage. Under A, which I'm going to say, you know, just reading between the lines, is the Waste Management language, they're calling that acceptable waste, whereas in D, which is what we would need to use, we call it solid waste. And if you go back to the very beginning of the contract, where it has definitions, solid waste and acceptable waste for purposes of the contract have different meanings. So, acceptable waste is basically, it says non-hazardous solid waste, special waste, and it gives that definition, and then it defines solid waste as garbage, rubbish, refuse, special waste and other discarded materials. I'll be honest with you, I tested real high in reading comprehension. I, for the life of me, can't understand the difference between solid waste and acceptable waste.
I, I can help with that, it is a little confusing. So solid waste, the term solid waste would comprise anything that has a liquid content of less than 10% that is considered for disposal. The difference is, and this is a small nuance, acceptable solid waste is a subset of that larger category, and it is defined by what the regulatory agency says can be put into a Class 1 lined facility. So there are certain things, special wastes, white goods, things like that, yard trash, things that legally, the operator of the landfill can't put into that. So that is what becomes the acceptable solid waste. So it's what is acceptable by the disposal facility from the larger solid waste.
So, but solid waste and acceptable waste are not mutually exclusive terms at all, are they?
No.
Something can be both acceptable waste and solid waste.
Correct.
If I'm a landfill facility.
In fact, all, all of the acceptable solid waste is solid waste.
All right, that's what I see.
It's just a, a smaller subset.
So then the question that I have for you, if the board wanted to move on doing something during the lifetime of the contract, because I think, I mean, everybody's on the same page, which is, there's nothing in the text of the contract which prohibits us from proceeding with third-party options during the course of the contract. If we can manage within the language of this contract of acceptable waste versus solid waste, so my question is, what's the reasonable scenario, or what would need to be done to segregate, because since there is going to be acceptable waste, which is not solid waste?
No, it is.
No, is, well, is all acceptable waste solid waste?
Yes.
Okay. So then, so it's the inverse that's correct, right? There may be solid waste, which is not acceptable waste.
Correct, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, so then by definition, then anything that we're going to do that's solid waste, so any, anything that we would collect for purposes of transfer to a landfill would be solid waste?
Acceptable solid waste, and it would, yes, correct.
Well, I'm trying to work within these definitions
Yeah.
that we're going to have to fight about.
So, so as I interpret those four subcategories you just described, those four little paragraphs, and I'm just trying to determine what Waste Management intended. They don't want you to bring them things that they can't landfill.
Sure.
So they're saying, take out the bad stuff that we can't put in the landfill. Then they also are saying, hey, we know you're supposed to be recycling, and anything you pull out that you consider to be a recovered material, that was one of the phrases in there, which is defined in 62701, you're allowed to do that. We, we agree, because by law, you're supposed to at least be doing something. That's why they listed organics, because that is also a recovered material. So anytime you pull something out of the solid waste stream, it becomes not solid waste, if it has a secondary purpose or use. So if I pull yard waste out and I compost it, and I use it to grow flowers, it's no lo, once I've pulled it out, it's no longer solid waste. And so that's why they use that very specific terminology of what they're saying, you cannot bring them. We'll, we'll let you not bring us this stuff because by law, you're supposed to be at least trying to do that.
So, here's just where I'm, if the county wanted to act during the course of the contract, before 2026, is, it's, if we're going to be allowed to do it, it's going to be because we're authorized by that Paragraph D. And it says, notwithstanding any other provision of this agreement, the county may remove or divert solid waste from county's waste stream, but we can have two waste streams, so.
Technically, and this is parsing words, but the waste stream would be all waste collected within the county. So it, it doesn't matter that you've got a wa, some waste going here, some waste going there. When you talk about solid waste within a county, waste stream is comprised of everything.
Oh, I understand. Just for the purposes of the benefit of the board, I mean, this is, for lack of a better phrase, the liability we'd be exposing the county to if we pursued a third-party option during the lifetime of the contract. So, that's what we're looking at, so.
Mr. Chair, in my opinion, and again, I'm not an attorney, it's a pretty gray area there. I think Waste Management would, would come after you if you tried to divert. I don't think it's worth.
So.
I mean, you could at least talk to them, I guess, but I, I wouldn't just do it.
But what if we did, I mean, and I'm just thinking outside the box here, what if we just cut back how many loads we send? Try to cut our costs there. I mean, it doesn't say we got to send 100 trucks or 50.
No, the problem with that, and, I mean, I'm on board, and I'm all for saving the county as much money as possible. The problem is that Paragraphs A and B above, which says very explicitly that the county's going to bring all of its acceptable waste to the transfer facility, and is going to load it onto trucks destined for the Waste Management. to load it onto trucks destined for the Waste Management.
Are we talking to our facility, our transfer facility? That's what they're saying. They're not wanting to go to each location, each site and pick up.
Right. But there's a second one that says that everything you collect has got to hit the transfer station floor, correct? I think that's what I heard you say. So they're saying, so what they're saying is, hey, everything you collect has got to go to the transfer station. When it gets there, pull out everything that we can't, we Waste Management can't take. Pull out anything you want to recycle, recover, compost, plastic, whatever you want, and the rest comes to us.
What about the compactor, Lou?
Again, their, I would assume that their stance would be that regardless of how you collected it, it's still got to hit that floor and hit their truck. Whether they're right or not, I'm not, I'm not saying, but my guess is that would be their interpretation. Whether it was a roll-off or compactor, their interpretation, I'm sure, is going to be, that's supposed to come to us.
So, I mean, where the liability risk runs in is, and I know Mr. Pravat put it in, for the benefit of the county is that Paragraph C, which says that there's no minimum amount of solid waste
Right.
that we're going to provide. And I don't argue that there's a there there in terms of what it can be done. But you have that language in B that says, "The county shall load the acceptable waste on vehicles provided on or behalf of the operator." So, you know, the liability we may be exposing the county to if we act during the lifetime of the contract would be to, basically, yes, we don't have to provide them with a minimum amount, but what waste we do have, we have to bring to the transfer facility, their argument is going to be, and we have to put them on trucks destined for their landfill. And so, I mean, my reading of it, when I was trying to get interesting with my interpretation, and if the board wants to do it, we certainly can pursue it, would be, if you look at D, which was our, be our get out of jail to the extent we can, it says, "Remove or divert solid waste from the county's waste stream." So the lawsuit would end up being a definition war about what is a waste stream, and can we remove solid waste from the waste stream to send it to a garbage collection stream? That's not a waste stream, or however we want to do it to divert the waste to an alternative facility. That would be what the fight is.
Mr. Chairman, what we can also do, I would think, is if we had compactors, we could talk to the hauling mechanism of the contract and see if we can haul via compactor units, the tray that's in those, which is going to be compacted more, we're going to get more volume than, than we did before. Still going a little further, but could be an option. Again, we have to run the numbers and see if that works or not. But if we can cut down the haul cost, the tip fee is what it is, if we cut down the haul cost, it can be at our advantage. I think that's more negotiable than the tipping fee.
Well, and you can, you can shave a lot out of this hauling cost, especially with a compactor, because you're paying Waste Management a 20% premium on that hauling. At $27.42 a ton, you can knock that 20% off if you were direct hauling it as a compactor.
Right.
So that might make their per ton, just to finish out the contract, might bring it more reasonable than you can say haul at the Ossila or somewhere else. I don't know what the numbers work out to, but I do know there's 20% added into their hauling fee.
I'm sorry, Mr. Perkins?
Just a thought, you know, since everything's hauled to
Transfer Station.
Collection.
Oh, the transfer station.
Yeah, transfer station. Like Florence though, over in Gainesville, could that be taken out and used for recycling? When you were talking about earlier for compost, but you've got the metal, the cardboard, and that type of stuff to be taken out, bundled up, and sold differently?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yes, yes, sir, can. I think they probably already pull sort of some rough, you know, as it hits the floor, they have to spot it on the transfer station. They'll, I assume they probably pull out the easily identifiable metals and things like that. As you get into the weeds of pulling out plastics and papers, that becomes much more difficult, and you, A, don't have the space within the physical structure right now to spread it and then separate and store it over here and over here. It has to stay dry, all those things, so you don't have the space to do it. Manpower, and it slows the things down too, so it starts to pile up faster. So you just don't quite have the size really to do what you're describing. But yes, that is definitely something that could be done. The challenge that you run into there is that you're spending money to sort through and pull things out, and sometimes there's no market for those things. So now I've, I've paid extra to pull it out, and I got to go landfill it anyway. It just depends on the market. It's like the stock market, you know, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. So metals tend to always be pretty good, but they don't really comprise a large volume of the waste typically.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Since we've been talking about it, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
If this were, if, if this contract was to go to litigation, any idea what potential fees to litigate this would look like?
I mean, significant. I can't tell you that, because you're talking...
Hundreds of thousands.
Well, I'll put it this way, Waste Management has kind of everything to lose, because I'm fairly confident. So if we, let's walk through the steps to get to litigation first. Commissioner Land, would be, we would call it, we would have to, if we took solid waste and diverted it from going instead to Waste Management, but to one of these alternative facilities, we would have to call that removing it from the waste stream, because that's what the contract calls for. And we'll have to, we can put whatever term we want on it, but that's what we would be doing. So then we would have litigation about, so what I don't know is how prevalent that phrase "waste stream" is in Waste Management contracts. And if I'm going to assume that that's probably pretty standard language, which I'll put money on that it is, then if I'm Waste Management, under no circumstances do I want there to be a judicial opinion out there that says that the county can have what they believe to be a waste stream, they can call it a refuse disposal stream, and not have it be the waste stream for purposes of the contract, as a way of end arounding what they thought was pat language, if that makes sense. So as I always tell a potential client, how much, how expensive is litigation going to get? On the one hand, the answer is unknowable, because a lot of it depends on how, what steps the other side wants to take. I mean, as a practical reality, there would end up being a settlement somewhere along the line. But that's the game of chicken. And what I don't know is Waste Management, on the one hand, would just be losing one small county or getting de minimis loads from a small county relative to others. Alternatively, though, but if there's a opinion where someone gets away with changing what to them is a key term, if I were them, I would want to go to the mat to say, no, this means what we think, what we demand it means. I hope that made sense.
Yep.
Did anybody look at the insurance on hauling this stuff? Automobile liability of not less than $11 million.
Wow.
General liability of $5 million. I don't think we got that kind of coverage for the county, David.
So, Mr. Chairman, we will do some tonnage calculations and...
I think every time we go over this, it just, it just, I've been dealing with it since I've been here.
The bottom line is, we got three years to have a plan in place to move forward. And the best thing we got to work toward, I think, is, is developing what that plan, what that structure looks like, do some experiments along the way, get a compactor or two, see how it works, see what it does, let's learn from it, know what our true numbers are going to be. I think, then we'll go into it with our eyes wide open, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think, I understand your frustration, but I think we have a pretty clear, three-pronged thing that we need to evaluate here. One is the collection, which I think we've already mapped out how we're going to do that. The second would be the hauling, which I think we need to look at, the cost of the equipment, insurance, all of that, to say, should you be in the business or not? And then the third is start having all the conversations with the different entities. And I know that's not the quick boom-boom answer you wanted, but it's, it's a very clear path forward to finding the answers or the information that you need to make the choices that you'll have to make within three years. And I think you have to have all of that done in pocket for when this contract is over, so that you're not caught flat-footed again. You've got options. You could initiate this, or this, or go out the bit again. And that takes effort to get that lined up.
And if I may make one other observation, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to be too unobliged about this. This is my bad analogy. I'm a Florida State fan, as y'all may know, and we're under that grant of rights, which gets, which is real expensive now, but as we get closer to the end, it gets less and less expensive to bear the cost of breaking, if you catch my drift. And so as we get, if we're active in moving towards a plan now, the cost if we do this today may be a whole lot. But if, let's say we're in year four of year five, well then, does it matter anymore from Waste Management's perspective to litigate this? And that's when we'll be paying the most per ton.
Absolutely.
So the quicker you can put a plan in place, you can make a calculated damages decision as to whether or not it's just worth absorbing the cost for the savings.
This contract, is this our contract, or is this Waste Management's contract?
This is Waste Management's contract as negotiated with Mr. Pravat at the time.
But these requirements for insurance, that is Waste Management's requirements for insurance coverage.
In the absence of me talking to Mr. Pravat, I don't know, but I would bet every dollar in my pocket that that's their language, which they use to make you use their trucks.
Well, can they require us to have one, a certain limit of insurance, but can run their trucks under a less?
I mean, if you wanted to, we could ask for an audit from them, which says, hey, we want to see the insurance limits on your trucks, and try to have a good-for-the- goose, good-for-the-gander argument of if your trucks aren't insured to that amount, then ours don't need to be.
Well, because just looking at that insurance coverage, that just pretty much negates you from hauling garbage right there.
I'd bet that's not an accident.
And also, that's a contractual agreement they have with Fisher that actually does the hauling, I believe.
But I guarantee you, they ain't got no $11 million combined single limit. Not hauling for $27 a ton.
I would have, you know, it's like, even meals require you to have a certain insurance come across their scales. I wonder if that's one of the things that...
Mr. Perkins, talking to that mic, please, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering that, if this were the requirements for the landfill, because a lot of the meals require you to have a certain insurance to come across their scales. And I wonder if that's one of the requirements.
I was just a question on my part, I mean, if that's the way it's got to be on the insurance, that'd pretty much end the hauling discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, certainly every facility is going to have their own, as Mr. Perkins just said, there's going to have some insurance requirement to come in and go up on top of the hill, and, you know, it is dangerous, there are potentials for accidents. But to the attorney's comment, whether or not what's in that is what everybody else is doing there, right now, no way to know that. My guess is probably not, but, and every facility is different. So certainly, as we talk to these other entities, we'd want to know that for each one of them.
It would just seem to me, I'm sorry, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If we, the most prudent course would still be to move forward as if we intend to
Yes.
do an alternative plan as quickly as possible, and then we can make a reasoned decision as we get towards the end of the contract, and basically shrug at Waste Management if they threaten to sue us. Like, okay, well, we already know what your damages are, and we still save money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my recommendation, because this has been going on for a number of years, and I can, I can sense there's a little like, oh, here we go again, on the board. I would like to put together a little roadmap of activities and things we've already discussed, what we should do with some timetables with Mr. Scott, Mr. Rafferty, so that you guys can take a look at that and say, all right, there is a plan, and by this date, we'll have this information and so forth and so on, and then you'll know, okay, well, by, you know, January, whatever it is, we can start actually making a decision and getting actual hard bids from, or hard agreements, or whatever you choose to do. I think that would make me feel better, so that, because, you know, there's a lot of entities here, but it'd probably make you feel better too, having a plan with some specificity.
That's, that's what I would like, to use a plan.
I will work with Mr. Scott on getting that to you here in the next 20 days.
Okay.
Everybody on the board, y'all good with that?
Should've done, done it. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
One last question. Would it, would it be, would it be an option to, or what are your thoughts on this? Be an option of the first compactor maybe going, and I don't know the, I don't know the answer, so I'm asking you, but if the first compactor went to the transfer station to compact what was getting brought in, to shorten, I mean, what we're paying them, I mean, because obviously, we're putting, there's a lot of airspace in those trucks. So can we compact at the transfer station, the first one, and maximize our bang with what we're paying the third?
It's not a bad idea. If it's going to be handled from the compactor into the long-haul trailer, you're going to lose some of the compaction.
I understand that.
But it'll be better. How much money you would save, I don't know, but we could, we could measure it and find out that, hey, if we did, you know, use the compactor, we could get this many tons in the long-haul versus not.
We'd be killing two birds with one stone.
You could do that, sure. And then it's right there...
We'd be doing some research while saving money on the haul.
Just go ahead.
And I would imagine we can get a vendor to bring one to test for us for a day or two, if we wanted to.
I'm just saying, you know, you could compact what we're doing already.
Sure.
And eliminate some, some leachate and some airspace, and then dump it on the, even if you lost some, I mean, if you flattened a milk jug, I mean, you're still going to gain some.
Yeah, you would definitely gain some, for sure. Might not be the full four to one, but...
Better than squish, squish out a bunch of liquids.
Yep.
What's a leach, liquids.
Leachate, yeah.
Yeah, whatever you call it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Is that it? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Tighten up.
Any further discussion on solid waste, or do you think we've beat it before?
Mr. Chairman, we need to talk a little bit about the solid waste fees if we, if we want to. Let me just, I want to mention the decals first. I know this question has come up several times by different commissioners, but in running some numbers, basically, in a year, we save about $143,000 by having the decals for what we save on outside waste coming in, the additional amount we get from the city, and then also, we collect because of the decals and the process that CHAG goes through, and tracking down the people who weren't paying the assessment already, we're getting another $30,000 there. So again, totally, the decals save us about $143,000 a year. So the, the message, I think, when you get the concern about the decal is, we don't want you to have to pay for somebody else's waste. And, but just wanted you to have those numbers. The next thing I wanted to just mention to you is, currently, we, there's about $430,000 that from, from general revenue that goes into the solid waste program. And so if you wanted to not have that come out of solid waste, or, I'm sorry, the general revenue, then the assessment would, would have to go about $25 to accomplish that totally. So didn't know what your thoughts were on leaving the solid waste disposal fee the same, the assessment, or if you wanted to entertain going up, but that's, that's the generic numbers on what it would generate. And I know that's always a fun topic to talk about, but, but it's just my job to give you the numbers.
What was the dollar figure, 400?
430,000.
Are we on year three of this contract? Are we at $35.13 a ton?
We are at, just can, correct me, we're at, is it 32.97, Dennis?
We're currently on the second year.
Second year.
September 30th.
Third year.
September 30th.
Yep.
Remember, we adjusted, Mr. Chairman, we adjusted this contract to coincide with our fiscal year. The other one ended in May prior to this. The other one ended in May, prior to this. October 1, we'll go to year three.
Roughly $2 more a ton, starting then.
Right.
So even, even adjusting the $25, even when the price goes up, still not going to cover it all.
Right. But we will have more households to pick up the tab on some of that.
True.
Which are around about 300 and, I can't find my numbers, about a little over $300, 300 households per year additional.
That's only 70 grand.
I'm sorry, it's three, last year was 372. And this year, we've got 202 so far.
So, 85 grand.
But at $2 a ton, if you're at 36, is that what, 36,000 tons? About total going, 33,000 is what's going to the landfill? So, the new, new, new households would cover the cost of $2 a ton increase. So, what, what do you need from us, Mr. Scott? Is this just a discussion right now, or?
We have it on the agenda tonight to talk about that, if you'd like, and we can defer, I mean, we've got some timelines coming, but...
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Layne.
So, 432, you said, comes out of general revenue, general fund?
430,000.
430,000. And that's not considering, or is that considering the 143 that we're saving?
No, it's not considering that.
And then we also could possibly save more if we go with a compactor on some of these hauls, as we get into that extra $2?
Well, you would, but it probably wouldn't happen so quick that it would help you in the, in the next budget year.
And also have the expenditure of the compactor itself.
Itself.
Or compactors.
Probably have that, yeah, we don't have that regardless. I just know things are tight for everybody right now.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, Neil.
So, that's, this is on the agenda for tonight, on the Sunday?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, unless you've got, anybody's got any questions. I really have to do a little shout-out for Dennis and Chad both in putting together numbers and things for the budget, and also this workshop. Very, a lot, a lot of good information, a lot of good knowledge there. I've been very impressed with what they have to bring to the table, and just wanted to give credit where credit's due.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you both.
Thank you, Mr. Lottler, for your...
And the team there.
And your team.
Yeah, he does a few things, too.
Any other questions for anybody on solid waste before we move on? Thank y'all for coming. I don't know if you want to hang around, but appreciate it. Item number two, discuss fire service and protection assessment. Chief Hand. Everybody wants to go to the restroom or whatever.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here today to discuss this. I do apologize for not having any backup information in the agenda packet. We didn't have anything completed at that point to get it to you ahead of time, but I hope to explain it good enough that you don't need it ahead of that. We're going to talk about some budget shortfalls and assessment needs, and also try to do some prioritization on some station locations. If you look at the, at the slide, it says current assessment 2223. These are the rates we adopted a couple of years ago after we had the fire assessment study. If you remember back at that point, Neighbors and Giblin had recommended that we be at $230 to fully fund the fire, the fire budget. The, now, there were some things in that budget that aren't currently in the budget. We'll get to that a little later in the, in the presentation. But this is where we're currently at, at 120 residential, 12 cents a square foot on commercial, 2337 on, on your vacant parcels, your parcel charge, and then 22 cents an acre on anything above 160. That's capped at 640. We do have some legislative changes that hit us in this last session. We're not going to have the negative effect that we originally thought we were going to have. They made some changes, I guess, before it passed. We originally thought we were going to get hit for about $600,000. Right now, we're looking at about, this is going off of GSG's original calculations that they came up to give us an estimate of what we thought those, that negative hit was going to be, and it's only on vacant ag land, or commercial ag land, I'm sorry. We don't currently charge ag land a vacant assessment, so it's, it doesn't affect us there. But we do have some commercial ag that it's going to affect. The $26,000 there is an estimate from them. I don't know if it's going to be higher or lower than that. Nobody can give me an answer yet, but, but we, we're pretty sure it's going to be somewhere in that ballpark. If we switch on to the next section, some budget shortfalls. These are some figures off of the 2122 budget and the, and the current 2223 budget. We, we, these are actual numbers collected. We brought in 2.523 million on, in 2122, 2569 in, in 2223. If you take the, the fire station line, the money that's set aside for that, and the contingency that is also part of the money that goes towards the fire station out of the expense budget, actual operating expenses were 29, 81, 529 in '21, and, and 3 million in, in '2223, gives us a 458,000 and 450,000 budget shortfall for those two years. If you do remember back in the budget works, or the, the fire assessment workshop that we had a couple of years ago, I know a couple of you board members are new, but the ones that were there, when we raised it to $20, we took care of the deficit for that, for that one year, and that was it. But it has, has since continued on. With the proposed 2324 budget, taking out there again, the fire station and contingency line, we did have a slight increase in the budget with salary increases. This come, and this 483 also has got the 26,000 calculated in, so we're close to the 450, the 457 that we're, been averaging. But I had to put the 26,000 in there. We've got a $483,000 budget shortfall. So, next section, what's not accounted for in the budget. Unless we adjust, if, if we set the rates to, to cover just the amount of the expense budget, we're not, we're not allowing for the annual cost increases that we have each year with just salaries alone, we'll raise it about 50,000 at the current 27% that we pull out of fire for salaries. We don't have anything in the budget for the new station and with personnel and operating expenses. There's nothing in the budget for apparatus replacement. There's nothing in the budget for fire equipment replacement. We're, we're having to just shuffle fine money to do stuff like that. And then the shifting of the salaries for the 50/50 split as proposed by the law firm when they did our fire assessment study. We currently pay 27% of our budget out of the fire, of our salaries out of fire, and we pay 73 out of the, the general budget, EMS budget. If we split it 50/50, it's going to, it's going to raise, it's going to raise up the fire budget by about 1.65 million, but that frees up 1.65, the same amount of money that is raising the fire budget, it would free up that 1.6 out of the general fund budget. So, we would, would not have to, you know, that would, that would free up almost a mill on, on that side. So where do we need to be? If you look for, look at the additional revenue slide, generated for every $5 increase, if you take $5, the best number that we had, that we got from Chad and every, and from figures from the property appraisers, or the tax collector's office, that when I talked to Mandy, we have about 17,132 parcels. If you multiply that by five, you get 85,660. Now, if we raise, if we raise the fire, the residential fire assessment, all other sections of the fire assessment have to be raised to be legal by the same percentage. That $5 raise is a one point, or, I'm sorry, a four, 4.1% basically increase. So our commercial would go up by about 12,000. Vacant land would go up by about 11. Our hotel motels would go up by about 2,300, for a total of 112,068 that would be generated by each $5 increase. Covering the, the proposed budget shortfall of 483,000, if we, if you multiply out that, that 112 by five, which is a $25 increase, it'll generate 560,000. So we'll be a little over the budget shortfall. If you cover, go to the next slide. Depending on whether or not we adjust the assessment every year versus every other year, or, or however long, we need to make sure that whatever we set it at now, if we're not going to touch it for a year or two, that we put in enough money to cover the annual increases that are coming, which is about 50,000 a year. If we go to $25, or increase it $25, the fire equipment replacement portion that we're currently don't have in the budget could actually, could actually be installed into the budget to where we have a line to be able to replace some of our equipment, such as fire hose and, and nozzles and stuff as they get damaged. The apparatus replacement, like I said, we currently don't have anything built into the budget to be able to replace it, to replace a truck. Costs of apparatus have skyrocketed ridiculously. We don't, I don't, this figure, at this figure, we'd have to save a couple of years to be able to buy an engine. But we can, we could, in off-years that we may not need an engine, we may need a brush truck, or we may need a tanker, but we would at least have a line started to where we have something in there to be able to replace our equipment without having to go through finance terms like we are currently in. The station, now, each one of these lines, the figure that's in parentheses, if, if we wanted to add that, that fire, that apparatus replacement line to the current budget, we'd have to add an additional $20 to the 25. So it would raise it up 45. Station six personnel, it all depends on what we set it at, if we did the, if we did the 50/50 split on the salaries, or the 27, left it at the 27, but that's what would, would cause, that would be the cost of six personnel at 50/50 and at 14, and at 27. We'd have to add, for the 27%, we'd have to add $10 additional to cover the salaries of the six. And then, if we did the full, that's covering the six, the six personnel, that's all that does. If we did the 50/50 split on salaries, 1.6, the budget's going to go up by 1.65 million, we'd have to add $75 just to do that, but there again, keep in mind, the general fund budget would be reduced by 1.6 million. So, that's pretty much the numbers of where we're at on the fire assessment. We're, like I said, we're, the figure showing where we, what we've currently been in shortfall for the last three years is staying right on par, just to get us to cover our operating expenses with the fire assessment alone. We've, we've, you know, we've got to do something like so. If we, if we did the 50/50 split with the numbers that I put together, it would put us right in the neighborhood of where Neighbors, it would be, that would be at 250 total on the assessment, the 230 that they recommended two and a half years ago. You know, there's been a few cost increases on a couple of lines since those budgets were created, that they did those off of. But the, but that would put us at a full 50/50 split and have the lines in there that we needed. And be able to cover the six personnel, because those were, those were built on the premise that Station Six was going to be built, and those personnel were going to be hired. So, what my, you know, my question is to you, is I need the direction of what direction you guys want to go, and where we, you know, where we need to be. We've, we've got to raise it a minimum of $25 to just cover our costs. And like I said, that is, that is covering just operational cost. I will say, in preparing this year's budget, the shortfall caused us to have some of the contingency that was sitting there. We, we lost a, a little bit of it, and we were, we were a tad under on budget of what was budgeted, underspent, we were underspent by the, and I've, and I've reduced, I've reduced the budget enough that the salary increase of 45,000 in this coming year's budget is actually only about 26,000, because I was able to reduce some lines that we were, when we built last year's budget, we were coming out of COVID, we weren't sure what flow, what fuel was going to do. I was able to reduce several of those large item lines by, by quite a bit to get to where we're truly at on our spending, so.
Where's your contingency at now?
Uh, we're down to, give me just a second.
Does the new fire truck that was brought in by the appropriations request help any, does it change anything?
Oh, it'll, it'll, it'll definitely help that, in that we don't have to spend that money, you know, like I said, that line can, if we could continue to do stuff like that, the apparatus replacement line would be, could be a lot less. The problem is, is how long, is, are those kind of things going to last? We went from 537, 138 last year contingency, down to 414, 895.
414, what?
895.
And this is just fire?
That's just fire contingency, yeah. And that, that is part, all of that contingency is part of the cares money that was set aside for helping with the station. That's not real, I mean, it's real money, but it's not generated money by the budget. It come from the cares.
So when we get ready to do the fire station, that's what that's going to get used for?
That was a, we've got 1.5 million in the station line, if we can build it for that, I'm hoping we can build it for that, but that was set, if, if you remember correctly, in the last, last year's budget workshops, I had the full 1.1 million and some change, and the 750 in the fire station line, and it came out to 1.9 and some change, and you guys requested us take that, put the fire station line at 1.5, and drop the rest into contingency. So, prior to that happening, we had 91,000 in contingency, and I removed, when we built last year's budget to get it to balance, I removed $359,000 of projects out of there. We had 169,000 that, and some change left in the fire station line that we had built a couple of years before that with the 250,000. We had spent the 83,000 and some change on the property. Then, the 169 that was left, since we had the 1.9 million, I had to remove that, and I also removed the 200,000 we had set aside for the water supply project that I decided, I, I mean, I just felt it's too large of a project, but to get the, about the, the budget to balance, those two, those two lines had to be removed to, to leave the 91,000 contingency. Like I said, all of, all of the expenses are day-to-day operations lines with repairs and maintenance, fuel, insurance, you know, just normal operating expenses. There's nothing in the fire budget whatsoever, with the exception of safety equipment, because we do, we do have to replace bunker gear, that's been established. But as far as normal equipment, like fire hose and nozzles and different things like that, that need to be replaced, we don't have a, we don't have a, a line that's, that's dedicated to replace that type of equipment, and we definitely, and we don't have anything to do any truck replacement. And we definitely, and we don't have anything to do any truck replacement. I mean, we have two engines right now. I mean, we were very fortunate for the board to approve to do the engines and the tankers that we had, that we got, because we were in such bad shape. But we've got two stations in the south end now that those trucks are wore out and in need of replacement before we start having, you know, major maintenance issues out of them.
So in your upcoming budget, does there any new equipment figured in there at all?
Not on the fire side. There is on the EMS side with ambulances, but, and I do have, because of having a little more room with contingency on that side in my EMS budget, I do have a few pieces of, and, and that's what we've had to do to be able to do, to make the fireside work. You know, if you remember when we, the air packs, when we bought those, we had to do the, the financing out of the EMS, the general budget, because there wasn't any money in the fire budget to pay for it. But we were at a legal time of having to replace the air packs because they weren't in, you know, within standard anymore.
So we're not having to replace any pickup trucks, any of that stuff?
Well, I may have to add a battalion truck because we just KO'd two more deer. But I, it's not in the budget currently, but I'm trying to get a quote back to see where it fits in. But I've, I've got two ambulance, two ambulance reach chassis that are rolling over from this year's budget, two more new reach chassis. So that'll get us caught up. And I'm really hoping now that we're out of the interfacility business that we're going to be able to drop back to only reach chassis in one truck a year instead of having to do two. We've already seen a maintenance drop, you know, of, of huge fuel savings and, and it's only been a month. So we're, but, you know, but there is, there is some equipment that would typically get split between the two budgets if there, you know, if there was a line in here to replace equipment, but I'm having to do it out of the other side to be able to, to do it, to make it work.
Well, you got the station six personnel here. I thought when we got out of the intertransfer deal, we were going to use those employees.
Well, we, we have, we could, we could do that. But my goal was if, if we can, if we can afford to hire the personnel for the new station, is we have a dire need down in the Laurerville area as well, because it's such a long drive down there from everywhere. And we have a station sitting there that's built out and all it needs is people. But we're still, if we move people around, we're still dealing with the same issue that we have, that we've, that we want to work towards trying to rectify, and that's that we only have two man stations. And it's, it's just like the brush fire that, that popped out in Brantford the other day. That was a very intense fire and our, our crew from station three was on a medical call, dropping off at Lake City Medical Center when that came out. So the closest truck to them was, to that call was the McCalpin station. So, you know, if, if we start snagging personnel and moving them into other stations, we're going to, we're going to get away from being able to eventually work towards putting four people in each station to where we have, you know, true coverage.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Do, do, and I don't know who to ask this, maybe ask the chief, but can the eight hundred K for appropriations, could we, and, and I don't even know if these exist, could that be used to buy two nicer used trucks?
Um, I know it can't not be, and the only reason I know this is because Brantford was only appropriated a portion of what they asked for, and they checked to see if they could purchase a used ladder truck instead of a new ladder truck. And they told them that they, you cannot buy used. Now, there may be a possibility of utilizing it because we can get an engine on a commercial chassis quite a bit cheaper than we can a, a custom truck. The only problem is, is it's not going to last as long as a custom truck does. You know, we can, we'll be able to get fifteen to twenty years out of a custom and ten years max, you're wore out on a, on a, on a commercial chassis. So you pay upfront to get something that lasts or, or you, you know, but even the commercial chassis that you could pick up last two years ago were, you know, at three hundred and something thousand dollars are now close to half a million. And the customs, I got, just, just to get a quick quote, and I, I knew I could get it quick because, before, before we sent the appropriations in, because it takes a while to get a fire engine quote because you have to, a custom one. I had them quote our build spec on the last custom engines that we, that Chief Summers had spec'd out and we purchased. We paid right at four hundred thousand for those trucks in two thousand and eighteen when we, when we purchased those. And the current price on that same exact build spec is seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So everything has, has skyrocketed on cost. Like I said, we can, we can probably get in a commercial for somewhere around four and a quarter. And we could get two trucks that way, but it's just not going to last us as long. But like I said, I've, I've, I've told you guys in the past, you know, it's y'all's job to make decisions of what we're going to do and my job to drive the ship. If, if trying to get two commercials that may last us ten years is, is something you're looking at, we can definitely use the trucks because we're, we've got several that are wore out.
And we're in what year of the lease deal we got on the new ones?
We are in this coming budget year currently, but in the new budget, we're in five and six, I think. Give me just a second.
In a ten-year?
Out of ten. Yeah, on the tankers, we're in year five, this coming budget year will be year five of ten, and engines will be six of ten. So we're, we're in four and five right now that, that we've, we've already paid.
And you expect those to last how long?
Minimum of fifteen, but probably closer to twenty.
So we, we leased them for ten, so you're expecting ten years beyond that?
I'm, I, I think they'll make ten years pass.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
On the commercial chassis, if you're saying you get ten out of those as we move forward and maybe open new stations, will those trucks last longer not having to travel as far?
They definitely, yeah, any, anything that we add to it is going to reduce the, the, the wear and tear on it. You know, I mean, it's like our mileage on, and, and, and there's different, there's definitely different outlooks on how you do it. Some people, some people will move trucks around and, and put a busy station and then run some miles on it and then move it to a slower station. But, and then there's other folks that look at it of, okay, I'm going to build all my miles up doing that until I get to a point, they all have to be replaced, let's just replace the busy one whenever it's wore out and leave the other ones. They may last five more years than you expected them to last. But like the station up here in LaBouk is, is twice as busy as the other four stations. They have almost twice the mileage on, on this one truck that we have on the other two. Those other, and those outlined stations, those trucks may last twenty-five years. They're, they're just, a custom truck is, well, it's, it's just, it's built to be a fire truck and everything about it is built from the ground up. They, they bring a chassis, a frame in on wheels and they build the truck up from it. All the electrical is built for the truck, you know, by the manufacturer, nothing comes from a, you know, a truck manufacturer and then has to be merged in with the fireside.
So when you're saying a commercial truck, you're saying a semi-frame with a?
Freight, yeah, you, long, long wheel-based semi-frame, single axle, you know, basically a big rider truck, you know, freight liner.
Yeah, they just put the first.
And then they put the body of the fire truck on it and, and then work all the electrical together. So, but like I said, those, those lines aren't in the budget. I understand that we can't get to where we, you guys aren't, I, I do, and I, I told each one of you when I talked to you before, when we were talking about interfacility transfers when it comes to the fire assessment, we've got to, we've got to get the fire assessment to where it needs to be because we're not there. But once we get it to where it needs to be and the budget has the things in it that need to be in it to be able to operate with replacing trucks and equipment, I'm not in favor of raising the fire assessment a dime above what it costs to do business unless we're increasing services. Now, if we increase services, we're of course going to have to go up on the assessments to, to help pay for it. But that's justifiable. But we're still, you know, the last adjustment was twenty dollars when it should have been over a hundred. We're still ten years behind where we need to be. So we've got to, we've got to make some adjustments and I'm willing, I, you know, small increments to get there. Anything that we can do, as long as we're covering our cost, is, is better than where we are. And, and if we need to make small increments now and in a couple of years, make another small jump and another small till we get where we need to be, that's, I'm good. You know, we just, if we, as we talked, just talked about in solid ways, we got to develop a plan to get there, you know, to where we can, where we can do, you know, business. And, and as, as you all know, the county's growing like crazy, you know, we're, we're, we'll get into call load here when we talk about station locations, but we're on, on par on the nine-one-one side to, to be up probably a thousand calls this year if we stay on the ba, on the pace we're going, just, just on the, you know, doing, just on nine-one-one calls. And as we grow, as we get more industry in, catalyst site, one thirty-six, seventy-five, these people are going to demand coverage and services that we don't currently offer that we're going to have to plan for.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, chief, I don't mean any disrespect by saying this, but what, what your, what your definition of level of service and where we need to be at is going to vary from everybody in this room. You know, where you want us to be may be here, where he wants to, may be there. It's all, I mean, it's, it's, it is exactly what you said, it's a level of service. The opinion is, what level of service does a ci, does a citizen and how much do they want to pay for?
Right.
You know, we can have platinum and we can, we can go up to the two hundred and thirty thou, two hundred and thirty dollars a year, or we can go, you know, middle of the road. Um, I mean, I, I guess that's a question that you're looking at us to answer, answer for you based on what, what the people are telling us. I mean, I look around other counties, I see Hamilton, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they have one staffed station, fire.
They just, they just started it.
They just started it.
About three months ago.
Prior to that, they were a hundred percent volunteers. I look at Madison, I think they have one staffed station. And, and geographically speaking, I mean, we're all relatively the same size. So do I want to see folks in Laurerville? Absolutely. Do I want to see two, four man stations at every site, at every station and build new stations so when, you know, the phone call comes in with nine-one-one heart attack and we get there in two minutes versus five? Absolutely. Do I want to pay three hundred dollars a month for that? I don't know. You know, that, that's, that's, that's the question, that's the million dollar question.
I understand exactly, but you got to look at what we're, what we're accomplishing here, we can't compare ourselves to other counties because.
I understand that.
Because number one, we, number one, we have, we run probably three times as many calls as Hamilton County. They just don't, they don't call nine-one-one because they know they're not coming. You know, they have one truck, two, two if they, this is ambulance.
It's a level of service.
On the ambulance side, right. It's a level of service that they have. But what we're, where we're different in what we do is, we are, yes, it costs on the fire side, but when we, when we put people in a new area, we're also putting ambulance in that area.
Right.
None of the other counties that you mentioned, Ma- Madison's trying to do it. They're just slow, they're where we were fifteen years ago when we started fire rescue. Now, they're finally got a board that is trying to, to merge fire and EMS together like we did a long time ago. Our budget total with EMS and fire combined is only about a million and a half dollars more than Columbia County's fire budget alone. And they were, they don't recoup any revenue off of EMS because they have a private service that runs it.
Right.
They spend eight million dollars a year.
And fire doesn't, is not a revenue generator.
Right, right, exactly. So they're, they're spending just under, you know, somewhere between a million and a half, two million dollars less than we are for only a fire department. And they, they have an assessment of over two hundred dollars over there. You know, we're still at a hundred and twenty dollars. That's what, that's what I'm saying is we're, we're, we've got the same number of people working, but we're doing fire and EMS with that same amount of people that they're doing just fire with.
But it's like you said, I mean, they got seventy-five thousand people and probably running twice as many calls based on population size.
Fireside, no, they don't. They don't run that many, they, they run EMS calls with their fire engines and that's the reason that they, they first respond for a century is the reason that their call load is what it is. But on fire, fire service alone, they might run two or three hundred calls more than us on, on fire call, true fire calls. We're, we're about the same on, on all of that. So that, that's just the difference, you know, just pointing out the differences of what we are comparative to other counties is we are doing both jobs, you know, and so. And if, and if our trucks, if we do get to the point down the road of, of four man stations, those fire engines at that point would become ALS engines that leave somebody, when that ambulance takes somebody to the hospital, there's still a fast response on, for, for medical in that zone.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
Just looking at some of the things you have here, chief, the annual increase fifty thousand, fire equipment replacement fifty thousand, like we were talking about in solid waste, Mr. Scott, was it three hundred and thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty. Did you take that in consideration?
The increase in people?
Well, yeah, and what they'll be paying?
It's about fifty thousand. Yeah, if you fit, I mean, it would be a tad more than that. Well, it all depends on what it is.
Right.
You know, everything's not going to go up as, you know, if, by the household, you're not going to have a commercial increase, you're not going to have a hotel motel increase. So it would be, you'd have to take just the, you know, the, the fire assessment by those numbers because they're not, if they're less than five acres, they're not paying a parcel charge, they're just paying a residential. So if you have over five acres, then you pay the parcel charge if you're not ag.
Well, I know we're just dealing with, with fire right now, but we recently did away with the transfers. So that's going to be a, a hit to your EMS budget, I'm assuming. What is that? Have you got, you got anything figured out on what that looks like yet?
As far as?
What's it going to cost you to get out of that? What is, I mean, what's the shortfall going to be?
The shortfall on revenues going, on, on the, the actual revenue itself is going, and, and the figures I used to build the budget with was around five hundred thousand. But there's cost, there were cost savings in the budget as well, so it's not going to be that big of a hit. It, you know, because I've reduced maintenance, I've reduced fuel, so, you know, there, it's not going to be quite as big of a, of, of, of a hit as that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Marble.
Oh, Mr. Hale. We had talked back to, when we was talking about, before, the, what about the services out like at the river out there? We was talking about you were breaking even, have you figured out maybe bumping that up, all that service for the spirit?
As far as when we work a special event?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we've, I've never tried to, to make a profit off of providing the service. I just want to cover, what we've always intended to do was cover the ser, the cost of the service. Anytime that we work an event out there at the park, we, we get paid, you know, well, we cover our costs, we probably make profit off of it, honestly, because we get, we get a hundred and ten dollars an hour for an ambulance to be out there with a crew on it. The call, the salary cost of that is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-five dollars an hour. It really doesn't cost anything for that truck to sit out there because it drives out there in parks and they use the back of it if they have a patient. So we're, we're making a little profit off of what we do, but I mainly just trying to, being a, being a service provider, providing agency and being the county, I've never looked at it as a profit-making margin. I'm just trying to cover our cost of providing the service to the increase in population. But we brought in, we budget every year around a hundred thousand, we budget a hundred. This year, I'm going to bump, I'm going to bump over it by a couple thousand dollars. You know, we, we brought in over a hundred thousand dollars of, of revenue from covering events at the park.
So on the EMS side, you're saying it's going to take another half a million on that side to cover that cost?
Well, that's what, I lower, I lowered the revenue projections by, that we typically, like, we would, we would bring in, you know, two point two million is what we were, we projected last year. I projected one point seven. I may be, this, everything is kind of up in the air this year because I don't have a, a years of not doing it to build, to build everything off of. I may be able to increase that revenue. I, I did it on a conservative note to make sure I could cover it with not, just the nine-one-one side. It's still, it is higher than what. what we used, you know, back in the day before we started transfers, we used to project about 1.4, you know. I went to 1.7. I think that we may get a little more than that. Um, but we also, you know, um, like I said, I, I, I really can't, like my fuel expense, I lowered it by $75,000 over last year, but I, I may be able to lower it more than that. But I just, I don't have enough ti, I didn't have enough time to get the budget prepared and figures of monthly, of monthly bills without running, I mean, I've seen, I've seen a, a decrease in the one month by, um, about $18,000 in fuel alone. But, you know, that could be just.
Well, I'm just trying to wrap my head around because, you know, we got the rest of the budget to go with.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is where, where's all this headed, you know?
Right.
What does that EMS side look like? What's this fire side? How much do we want to pull out of general revenue to cover that increase?
Right.
You know, we're already funding garbage out of general revenue to some extent.
Right.
So that's, I'm just trying to wrap.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to pin.
I mean, I mean typically, typically everything in our operational budget there is funded. Basically, the general revenue puts in towards our budget about the same every year.
Yeah.
And then the extra stuff that we do in our equipment detail, we fund out of the excess revenue that comes in above what's projected. So none of that stuff has to be funded. And it's, it really, if, if that budget was, we haven't ever, we, we've never done the same thing on that side of the budget that need, that we're needing to do on the fireside and put in actual lines of ambulance replacement and, you know, cardiac monitor replacement. All of that is always funded out of excess revenues that come in above projections. If we, if we built those lines, then, you know, those excess revenues wouldn't be needed to cover those items. They could be applied to lowering the general side. But typically, it's been the same amount of money pretty much on the general budget that, that comes out each year. I don't know how that's going to look until Nina gets done building the budget on the total county budget as far as we've got ours built, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Um, I'm putting property appraisal on the spot. What's, do you know the projected increase percentage wise on that volume taxes? End of the month? Um, I mean, I, I roughly predicted about a 15% increase likely. Um, I mean, and I don't know about y'all, but.
That's new households or just property value?
Just, just overall increase year over year in revenue. It, it could be higher than that. I mean, it's 15. So.
And new commercial too? I mean, did you?
Commercial. Any new construction goes to market value.
Yeah, so that's where I was, yeah. That's where I was thinking 15, but after hearing him, it may be closer to 10%.
I would say, I would say 10 is probably.
So, I mean, and I don't mean to pick on the chief, but, but we got a lot of departments and offices that we just wanted to figure out a way to say no and work with what we got. Cause you, I mean, you just heard it, 10% increase in revenue. E- everybody's going to be hitting us with 10%, 20% increase in their department or the office budgets, I suspect, just because of the cost of doing business, not because that their wish list is too high, but I mean, cost of doing business, but, um, you gotta get creative.
I can tell you.
Health insurance is what, 8% increase?
Probably so. We'll know that by the end of the month.
So I'm saying, I mean, this, this, this inflation's hurting everybody and it's, your revenue's not doubling.
Well, I can tell you on my fire budget, my budget's reduced this year. Not by much, but it's reduced, but it's basically the loss of contingency that shows in the, in the budget. The, uh, um, on the EMS side. Got to get the right folder. We were talking fire, so I didn't, wasn't prepared to go booger EMS stuff, but for budget, but.
While you're looking that up, um, it, it is, this is just a question. I'm not a fireman, obviously. Is there not a, is there not a cheaper way to buy a fire, a fire truck? I mean, do you have, is there, I mean, like, I guess what you call the brush trucks? I mean, is there a way, can those have the AL, what do you call them, ALS?
ALS.
Yeah. Can those have those apparatuses on them? I mean, do, do, do we have to have a 750,000 dollar fire truck?
We have to have a class, we have to have a, a, an engine that's classified if, if we want it to be a recognized fire station.
For ISO or?
For insurance coverage or whatever, it, or, or recognized by the state as a fire sta, as a, as an occupied fire station. It has to have a Class A pumper in it, which is 1,250 gallons a minute, 1,000 gallons of water, all of the fire equipment that goes on an engine. The brush truck is a complement to that for front and brush fires. Now, there's a lot of companies, you know, a lot of stations or departments that run medical calls out of a brush truck because it's a lot cheaper to operate it and it puts miles on a $60,000 vehicle versus a, a hundred, you know, $700,000 vehicle. The only problem is, is if you're on a medical call in that and a house fire breaks out, then you've got a truck you can't fight a house fire with. You've got to go back to the station, get a engine and then go to the house fire. So, but yes, there.
Well, how many house fires do we have a year average?
It varies, but we average somewhere between 60 and, you know, 60 and 70.
That's, that's, that's structured fires?
Yeah. That's what I said. It's gotten better. I mean, we used to average, you know, early on in my career, we averaged, you know, 90 to 100. Over the years, it's reduced because codes have gotten better, mobile homes are built better, they've got drywall now, they hold fire. But the thing about it is, is one fire, if somebody's trapped in it, you know, it's, you know, it's, unfortunately, the cost of doing business is, is expensive and it's getting worse and worse every day. But we're, it's just, you know, it's public safety. It's, it's somebody's life that may or may, may be on the line. I mean, and, you know, if you have a heart attack, you got six minutes. Well, if we're 12 minutes away, you're going to die. And it's as simple as that. If we're close enough to get to you, we can, you know, we can, uh, do a whole lot, lot better.
Well, bottom line here, so we got to move on. What, what do you need?
We've got to have a minimum of $25 this year. If you do 30, that'll hold us, that'll give us enough to, I mean, I don't know for sure what the new households are going to be. I mean, we can go off of averages. But if you did $30 and took it to, to 150, um, yeah, 150 even, that's going to, that's going to generate about 670,000 more. And that will cover any increased cost of anything that we have coming between now and when we make another small adjustment. You know, but we got to have 25 to get by. That, that puts us, that puts us covering our budget shortfalls on our current, on our current budget. We.
But that, that include, that doesn't include adding any staff?
No staffing included. You got to add 20 more for staff.
All right. Let's, we get on that. Everybody, anybody need to ask anything else on that part of it?
Just real quick, on the 20 more for staff, is that moving to your four man or two man?
That's just adding six people for the new station.
So how, I know you want to move on real quick, but I mean, we talked about Lurville, could easily be something going on there. We have station six. What would it take? Okay, is that what you're fixing to get into?
Yeah.
Okay.
While we're moving along.
I'm just trying to, and what is our deadline of, of making the decisions on assessments? Mr. Baker might know that, or Keith?
The next meeting.
The next meeting?
Right.
Two weeks.
Wow.
Right. Two weeks.
I'm sorry. We can do, we can cover if we leave the salaries at the 27% split that they're currently at, we can cover the, the, now there'd be a general revenue side of 73% that's got to go up for those six people. But on the fire side, we can cover it with $10.
That's what I was wanting to.
So if we did $40 instead of 30, 30 would give us enough, and we probably could do, you might even be able to do 35 because there is some, you know, every five dollars does 112,000.
But it's, I guess where I was, I kind of went going in a positive direction. I was thinking if we have two more operating stations, you're going to cover that area. I mean, it's not going to put such a strain on the two man stations.
My.
And we're not running the transfers.
My current, my current, um, plan of being able to staff Lurville was taking one, we, we currently run two crews out of the McAlpin station because we, we were tra, we were rotating those trucks through the transfers. We have two man stations in three other areas. My current plan was either, either move those people to station three in the south end because they're so far from everybody else, or move that crew to Lurville and open a station in an area that is not currently covered. I've been reluctant to do that currently because we're only one paramedic per shift above our minimum staffing level right now. I don't want to open a station and then have to shut it down because, you know, we've, we've, now we've got several guys that are in paramedic school, couple that have completed just have to pass their tests. And if I can get those paramedic numbers up to where I know I've got enough paramedics to operate, then I can move a crew to Lur, Lurville and turn the pa, well, the power's on, but turn the internet back on and slap a computer in it and we're good to go. Um, you know, we do have to think about trucks, you know. We would be getting by spreading some stuff around to get by with until we could get a truck in that station, but we could operate it pretty quickly. All of our other options are building or, or a extreme refurbish. Um, but that station's ready to go. I mean, we lived in it for almost two years when we were, you know, and we're, we're getting into that with the stations now, but.
Well, I mean, one, one other thing, it's going, it's going to take a little while to build a new station, isn't it, right?
Right. And that's what I'm thinking too. The only thing that I was looking at is, is if we go ahead and rate, I know that it may take us all year to build that station. I'm not looking, I don't have personnel in this year's budget for that station. I knew it would be at least next year before we staffed it. Um, but on this side, adjusting assessments, if we go ahead and take care of it, you know, then we don't have to take care of it next year. Um, but we've, we've got to adjust it for the personnel whenever we do it, or we got to do it now. So, so it's there for the personnel when they come on.
And so tell me again, what the plan was for the people that you're taking off the transfers? What are you going to do with them?
The, the one crew from the, Live Oak, and we'll get into some numbers here in a minute, but the Live Oak station is busy enough that I need two ambulances running out of there. So they were running nine one ones and transfers out of there, but we're going to leave one of those crews there because it's just so busy. They have, I mean, if not, the outlined stations would be coming to Live Oak to answer calls all the time and that zone's going to be uncovered. So what we, but the McAlpin crew, this McAlpin station, taking one of the crews from there and moving to Lurville, and we can open that up with current personnel, and then we would be hiring personnel for the new station when it's built.
Okay. I was, I was just trying to wrap my head around.
But like I said, if we did, if we did $40, we can, that covers the cost of the personnel on the fireside and we can, you know, and it's done and not have to be done next year.
All right. Any, any other, any other questions before we moves on?
No, sir.
Next thing that we, that we need to talk about is because we do have this appropriations money and, and is, um, our fire station locations and where, where we, where you guys think we need to build this new station at. If you look at.
As, as we, he goes through this, if you keep these pictures in mind, these are actually pictured, are stations in some of the areas that were actually often valuable for those and that places may go.
You know, these are, these are current stations. The one up there in top left is up at Stagecoach off of 132. It's on Boys Ranch property. We have a long-term lease with them, I believe. If not, I know we can work that out. But that station has a dirt floor in it. When you go through off the pavement out front, it goes into a dirt floor. So it's pretty much a total rebuild. Uh, one on top right, that's Lurville. Um, it's ready to move into bottom, bottom left is, is, uh, the Pine, Pine Grove Station out at 136A and Pinecrest Road. The middle one on the right is the O'Brien Station off of 349. And the bottom one there is the Falmouth Station out on 90 East, or 90, 90 West, I'm sorry. Um, you know, we have, the fire stations are located as part of systems tribes to deliver a uniform level of service for all addresses, and we adjust that for risk service demand. Our response times are measured from the time of dispatch to the time that we arrived. If you look at the chart there, you can look at the call load for the last three years. In 2021, we had 11, like 11,200 and something, 42 calls, I think it was. 2022, we had 11,000, um, 400 and something, 500 something, something like that. And then on 2023, you can see there that we're, we're approaching 8,000 already, um, and we still have four months to go. The next one is our current response zones. These are the current five stations and these are the, these are the map pages that are considered the primary response zone for the stations as they're cur, as they currently are laid out. Um, and they show the call load in that zone. As I said, the Live Oak zone, you see it, it reaches all the way to the river and, and east and west of 129 and, and over towards Falmouth. We had fi, 5,732 EMS calls and 400. These are, these are last year's numbers. These, these numbers are for one year. 458 fire calls. The Dalling Park zone, we had 1,085 EMS calls and 135 fires. The McAlpin zone had 1,003 EMS calls and 190 fire. Now, that does not take into the account the number of times that they came to Live Oak and Backfield. Um, the call, the call load up here, the 5,700 would be indicative, indicative of the calls in that zone, but that 1,003 is just for the, the actual response zone. Um, the Welburn, 759 EMS and 142 fire. And then the station three Beachville zone, 1,140 EMS, 227 fire.
Or 220, yeah.
I think it's 27, three or seven. If you flip to the next map, these are splitting the primary response zones out with same, the same calls, but splitting it out to where these stations match up. The, this is your ISO coverage five miles, but this is the primary response zone that that station would be responsible for. Um, basically what I did here was so we could look at the call load and kind of prioritize where we think this new station needs to be first. Now, as I, as this, as it says there, this is a long-term plan. Um, this is where we need to be when we're finished putting stations in. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight, may not even happen in my career. But it's where we feel as, as department that we're going to need to be someday. But this gives us an idea of, okay, if we build a station here, this is, this is the, and those primary response zones, as, as we only add one station and two stations would be bigger than this. Like the Falmouth one up there on the, on the northwest side of the map would go further to the east and, you know, and maybe a little farther to the southeast of it being the primary zone because that station in the north wouldn't be there. Um, you know, currently, that's all taken up by the station one zone now and a little bit of the, of the Dalling Park zone. Um, so, you know, when I look at this, we have, So, you know, when I look at this, we have, we have two areas of increased response times. The northwest part of the county and the southeast part of the county, the Lurville Zone down there is, is a long way from anybody. And so call load wise, they're about equal. And we do have some areas that have maybe a little bit higher call load in them, in these zones, but response times from the other zone aren't as bad. So to me, they're not as high of a priority because the response time is there. It's like the, the zone on the, on the southeast, um, just north of the south is on there with the five seventy-one in it. That would be a station that we'd have to acquire property and build. And it's one of the busiest zones when you look at these all split up, but it, it encompasses the ranchettes is why. The Beachville Station can get to the ranchettes pretty quickly. Now, when there's more than one call and it happens quite frequently, it takes a long time for anybody else to get there. Welburn is actually the closest to the rant, the closest, quickest truck to get to the ranchettes. So, um, you know, what I want from, what I'm looking at on station locations from you guys is, I've defined on this map by the, the coverage, and it's the next one in the book, of where we need to be to get the maximum coverage that we can. If you look at the orange circles on your map, those are the current five station, career stations that we have. The blue circle is Lurville and it has, it's built out and ready for personnel. The two pink circles are where we currently have buildings. I don't know if the Falmouth Building can be renovated or not. I know it would, it would probably have to be added on to and it may be better to just tear it down and start fresh. It would, that would be, we haven't gotten to that point of, ever gotten to that point of that even being a consideration. So we've never put that kind of effort in, but there is a block building out there with, with two bays and an office in it. The yellow circle is Pine Grove and, and, and there is a building there, the real ugly barn square kind of hexagon shaped barn. And then the other yellow circle down there, we own, we have property at Rocky Hill off of two fifty-two, but when I started building this map, it was too far north and too much coverage overlapped. It needed to be shifted down some, somewhere in area one hundred and ninety-second street off of forty-nine. And there's a hay field right there that they don't use the corner of, so we could probably work a deal for, for some property there for a building eventually. But, and we still have a good response with two hundred sixteenth street and one hundred eightieth street, east and west, to get north, southeast and west. So these are, these are just the locations on the map. The other zone, the other one puts it into response zone and kind of shows you how many calls are in those areas. But just remember the, the response time to the, to the north end of the county is, is, I mean, we run the map page thirty-nine, which is that little cluster of dark up there on the northwest side. That's map page thirty-nine. We run up there quite frequently because it's pretty populated. It's a little neighborhood up there. That's a, that's a twenty-minute run from Station One and they're the closest station. The Falmouth Station can shoot straight up one hundred and eighty-fifth and probably be there in five minutes. You know, the, we had talked about building a station on US one twenty-nine and I never really paid attention to how much of a northeast turn one twenty-nine takes as, as it leaves Live Oak. And if you build a station on one twenty-nine, you've got good response, but you shift your coverage so far to the east that it, it doesn't make sense. And the Stagecoach Station will cover anything on the north end of one twenty-nine on the insurance coverage. Technically, that Stagecoach Station would be better, better suited for coverage about a mile east of seven ninety-five, but for response, being right at seven ninety-five is the best place for it to be because you can head east, west and south as quick, as quick as you need to and you're around the corner from the Boys Ranch if anything happens there. So my, uh, basically what I was, I'm looking at for, from you guys is, is direction of where you want us to go. You know, priority wise with what's coming at the Catalyst Site, I think we need something there. Call load dictates that it's pretty, it's pretty busy out there. And the Lurville area putting, getting people in there is a priority because it's, it's a long way from everybody. And the call load is pretty, pretty stout there as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Chief, just looking at the map, a couple of observations. And, and I mean, there's no question that, that there's a huge hole down there in Lurville. That's my district. But we're a resilient bunch down there. We've been doing without staffing for a long time, forever. Is there a way, tell me, what's the cost to staff a station, a two man station annually? What's this, what's the cost of that?
The staffing alone is five hundred and twenty-six, a two man station is five hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-two.
I tell you what I'd like to see you do with that five hundred thousand before you, before you put people in that Lurville Station, is that McAlpin Station in the center of our county that responds to everything? Those guys are, are working out of a double wide mobile home? That, that's, that's center. That's, it's staffed, it's a nice place, it's a double wide. It's not meant to withstand twenty-four hours a day, grown men, grown women, adults, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five usage. It's not hardened, it's not storm safe. Those are the people that are going to come get us when the hurricane hits or the tornado hits. And they're maybe in worse shape than what we were.
Right.
Is there a way to fix that? I, I didn't see this anywhere in this booklet to address the double wide.
That was, and that was an oversight on my part in putting it in there because I did have it on my mind to talk about. And I was going to bring that up after we talked about the, the coverage of, of what issues we have with current stations. As we, as we move forward, it's, it's like our, um, you know, Station One is our primary headquarters station. It, it holds people fine, but it hasn't had any renovations in it in twenty-five years. It's, it needs new floor and it needs, you know, some new cabinets in the kitchen. I mean, we, we've glued some, some drawer handles, you know, or faces back on, just glued them on because they fell off and there's nothing left to them to, to be able to screw them back on. Our Station Two, of course, is the mobile home. We've got, you know, we, we had it, we thought we were building a block building whenever that happened and then, and that was before my time as chief. But we, you know, we ended up with a, with a mobile home that is, it looks beautiful when you walk in it, but it's only about five years old and it's falling apart already.
It's not built to withstand that, that kind of usage.
Right. And then Station Three is, is a, you know, nice little wood frame home, but it's a three-bedroom, one bath that, you know, you got guys living out of, trying to share a bathroom that's, that's big enough, you know, for a kid to get in. So just like I say, just renovations on some of the stuff that we need to do. But I agree, Station Two's a priority to try to do something.
I mean, I guess where I'm going with this is, is it's, do I want to look out for my district? Absolutely. Do I want to do that at, at the cost of what we're doing now to the rest of the county and not fixing our hub? I call that our hub because it's in the middle.
Right.
It's a four man station, right?
Right. It's currently a four man station, yeah.
I mean, I personally live two and a half miles from this Lurville Station. I mean, that, that, that would benefit me tremendously, but.
Right.
But I also see we're going backwards at McAlpin.
Right.
I, I think that we need to look at that first. I mean, if the guys that are and gals that are coming to get you are in an inferior structure than the one that got hit, I mean, what, what's that say? That's my, that's my one concern that I would like for us to consider before we start talking about going to four mans or two mans or building a new station and staffing it, is everything that we have, is it where it needs to be with what we're using today? I mean, I just think that's good business. I think that that's smart. I think that, that, that it, the, the stations that we're operating now, if they're not where they need to be, that, that needs to be number one. And I don't think McAlpin's where it needs to be personally. And then, you know, north of town, that new station, I mean, you look at the circles. It, it, it's, obviously a lot of stuff has changed since that fire station property was acquired. You know, you got the Catalyst Site booming. You got an interlocal and a great relationship now with the city that, that didn't exist in years past. That's improving daily. There's absolutely a need up there. I mean, that hole's pretty big too, when you look at the two pink circles. And Commissioner Hill, that's your district, but there is a need there, that, that needs to be.
You almost have to go further to the east like he's saying though, because if you look at this fifty-seven hundred and thirty-two, it picks up the edge of Corberville, if you will, there. And basically runs all the way back over to, close to Dalling Park there.
Yeah. It definitely needs, my, my opinion is if we're going to do a station north of town, it needs to be further north than where the current site is at. Because if you put it at the current site, you're going to have a whole lot of overlap on these circles where you got other, other circles that don't even touch or, or, or barely overlap.
Where, where does that circle look like? It's not on here.
Yeah. And we're never, one thing about in our, in our community, we got a big county. We're never going to be able to afford to put, to cover every one of those open white zones with a circle. It just isn't going to happen. It, you know, and, and most rural communities are that way.
Oh, I mean, Matt, we just talked about it. Hamilton Imagine got one circle.
Cities do it, but, you know, they don't, we can't afford it. We don't have the tax base. If you.
I'm just asking, I mean, that circle's not on here and just for the.
I did not put that circle on here because when I started creating this map, I saw how much overlap it was and I was, I was not as much in favor.
Who's in Pine Grove? Is that, that station's not manned?
No, Pine Grove, Pine Grove is a station, which is the yellow circle over on the east side. That station is, is, uh, flip back to that picture.
We don't own that property is what the yellow thing is.
Right. We don't own the property. It's in some sort.
But I'm just saying that's.
It's in a volunteer association.
Right.
I mean, if you look on the tax roll, it says, um, Stagecoach, I mean, Pine Grove Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated is, is what it is on the tax roll. But most of those people have either passed or they're not involved at all. I know that. Yeah, Mr. Bo knows a lot about Pine Grove stuff.
Well, my question is if that, if we based it off the current property on or something very close to that, that would almost reach over there to cut in half of that circle to Pine Grove and would almost probably go back and pick up Stagecoach and then that would leave you having to deal with Falmouth, but.
The circle, I did.
Station One can pick that up.
I did draw, I, I did do a map. I didn't bring it to this meeting with that, actually it was a little north of there. But drawing a map from, and, and it goes over towards the Stagecoach area, but it does not cover the Boys Ranch, which we have a water system at the Boys Ranch. So if, I don't know what it would do to their insurance if the coverage was dropped from, because we still are currently recognized on the, on the Falmouth Station until our next, we're going to lose all our volunteer stations on our next.
I mean, I think that if, if, number one, you need to look at McAlpin. We need to look at McAlpin. Number two is if, is if we're going to build a station north of town, that circle needs to one thousand percent pick up the Catalyst Site because those businesses that are coming there will exponentially recognize that ISO, that EMS vehicle being there. I mean, you're talking about ten years from now, there may be eight hundred people on a day shift, eight to five. Eight hundred people working, there's going to be some accidents. And if you, you, you draw a circle up here north of town and it doesn't pick up the Catalyst Site, five years from now, you're going to be standing here in front of us telling me we need to build a station at Catalyst Site because there's all this infrastructure. Now there's a truck stop, there's this, there's that, there's all these people out here, we need another station.
Every one of these stations eventually need to be built. And that's, that's why I showed you the long-term plan down of where we need to be. Like I said, probably not in my career. This is just where we need to end up one day. What we've got to decide, or y'all have to decide, I'll give you the information that I can give you with call load and response times and everything else is what your priorities are as a board. You know, I can tell you as, you know, my, when I look at, at it from an operations standpoint, anytime you can do something in between two others, you're cutting the distance and you're covering the most. You may not be covering your five mile area, but you're covering the most area that you can get to the quickest by being in the middle of something. So, you know, truly, really and truly, something in the middle of the north end of the county would give us the best coverage both ways, but we're not going to cover the Catalyst Site with that because you can't cover Catalyst Site. That circle, building a station somewhere in that circle is the only way you can cover that Catalyst Site. Or you can build one about a mile down the road from Station One. There's nothing, the city of Live Oak, the, the Stagecoach Station, anything on one twenty-nine, none of those are going to take in that Catalyst Site without something being built in the neighborhood of the Catalyst Site. Now, the one, the one thing that I was, and I know we have a lot of property around the Catalyst Site that we could possibly build a station on. And I don't know that the piece of property, the footprint that that Falmouth Station is on, if we tore it down, would be big enough for a, a career station because that's a small piece of property. We may have to try to acquire a piece next to us or behind us or something. But covering the, the most residential area with insurance, it needs to be in the area there of ninety and one hundred and eighty-fifth because you're only two miles from the Catalyst, so you're covering them. You still got a quick response.
What is the, Mr. Chairman? What's the, how does that work with the shares, Boys Ranch, youth Boys Ranch with that piece property? I know you said they let us use it.
I, I've never.
And you mentioned they have water.
Right. They have a hydrant system at the Boys Ranch. So they're with a, with a station within five miles of, of them as anywhere else in the county. If you are within five miles of station and you have water supply, we currently carry an ISO rating of four where we have water supply. So their ISO rating is a four. If there's not a station within five miles of them, then it doesn't matter that they have a hydrant system, they go to a ten. So it would be a major difference in the insurance that they pay on their buildings out there. You know, and that's, that's the, that's the whole premise behind trying to get the best, best coverage that you can. All those open areas right now that are outside of five miles are a ten. And there's some places, there's some insurance companies in the state of Florida won't even ride a mobile home if you don't have at least a nine.
But there's, just make sure, but there's not water up to that station, that current?
Not to the station.
Okay.
It's, the, the water system's in the building, in the Boys Ranch.
I got you.
For their buildings, but because it's within five miles of a fire station, they get the credit for the water system. And we utilize it when, if we have fires up in that area, we run into Boys Ranch and fill trucks up off of it. But it's, it's a, you know, like I said, it, like, I wanted to present you with the information. It shows you the call load, it shows you, you know, the coverage. The, the response times are definitely the northeast, northwest section and the southeast are the two biggest response times that we have. But I'm looking for direction on you because we have appropriations money we got to get busy on before they take it back.
And I'll say this on the Catalyst Site, if everything's going to boom the way Commissioner Land says it is and the Alabama taxes, we'll make off of that, we can build a couple of fire stations. Or re, or maybe like you said, maybe the Falmouth, that corner lot refurbishing or, or doing something different there. I mean, because the location's not bad. It's just the facility's not there.
Right. Yeah, location is actually good.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I mean, there's, there's one more circle that's not on here and I know that it's probably wise because it's not our property, but we do have an interlocal automatic aid agreement, whatever that terminology is with the city of Live Oak. And I mean, that's, that circle there, if there was, was a circle there, would catch a, a lot of that that is northeast of the, northeast of Live Oak.
If you took.
Definitely towards Pine Grove.
If you took this one circle, go straight to the right and.
You would catch.
If you took, if you took this orange circle, go straight to the right, and if you moved it up to about the corner of map page 128, about 48th Street, so, five miles up, of 129, is just shy of 48th Street.
So that would catch some of that Pine Grove area, that, that circle there.
Yeah. If this was moved over here, this, this section here is going to almost touch. It's going to come further east on 90, it's going to go, you know, it's, it's just going to move up to the northeast just a tad. More, more almost crazy. But...
Well, that's the reason we're in a workshop, so we can all, five commissioners, discuss this, so...
Right. Yeah, and that, and that's, like I said, I'm looking, I, I brought the information to you of what I think is, is, is the long-term plan of where stations need to be. What I'm looking for is prioritization of, and direction of where I need to move forward with, you know, we have the, the appropriations money that we have to do something with, or we're eventually going to lose it. I mean, there's...
And I'll be selfish here, I won't be ashamed to do it. I mean, there was myself and five commissioners that fought for that fire station, and we identified the area. And I still think these numbers back up the need for it there, or at least very close to that area. I don't care if it's that piece of property or not. I know there's a lot of stink over that, and I don't care about that. I'm just looking at what's best for the citizens, what's going to help, you know, our community. It was identified then, it was unanimous. I know a few things have changed. I know why they've changed, but I, I mean, I'm just asking everybody to really think about what's best for the community. What numbers are we looking at? And I agree, Catalyst Site's going to take off at some point in time. And there's going to be a lot of taxes paid out there. And if we follow through and build the fire station, that Senator and the House Representative, and the others, there were many others that helped us fight for, I just think it shows our commitment the next time we ask for fire station funds and moving forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Um, Mr. Hill, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all. The only part that, that I guess I would somewhat disagree with is, is as far as our, our commitment to Senator and Representative, yes, those guys and other, like you said, did work hard for us.
And the commissioners that worked very hard.
And commissioners as well. But that, that, that was prior to us getting $15 million to go toward infrastructure to Catalyst Site. I mean, the game has changed, and if, and if those folks question our commitment that we made, because the rules have changed, if they can't acknowledge that, hey, this has changed, like, oh my gosh, it, it, it makes more sense now, a fire station complements the Catalyst Site with everything else that the legislature has, has awarded us. If, if they say, no, we gave it to you to build it right here, we don't care what happens, well, then I would, I would say, well...
I don't think that's going to be their, their stance on it.
Yeah, but you made the statement that by us building one north of town, that it, it shows our commitment to do it. I mean, I'm still committed to do it. I just think that with a fire station near the Catalyst Site, or Boys Ranch, near the Boys Ranch, I'm good with that, as long as that circle can catch the Catalyst Site, the return on that investment, that would help generate, in addition to what we got going out there, economic development, that's going to play a factor into, and I'm not, Mr. North, Mr. North is back there, but, I don't know what the checklist is, but I would about guarantee you, when a company's talking about investing $50 million, one of the first things they say is, how close is the nearest fire station with the EMS? And where it currently will say, well, you're outside of a five-mile circle. If we could say, half a mile, two miles.
I agree with you, but I can say, I've worked with Mr. North, and I haven't had anyone ask that yet. But I'll just say, I, I don't care. Like I say, I know the problem with the property. I know we got the money after the property's been an issue to do the water and sewer. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to pretend like we don't know what it is. I'm good with that. I am good with that. I want the board to know this. I'm good with that. I just want to make sure that the citizens, the people who want to kind of pay this, that's going to be supporting this, get the coverage.
I understand.
You know, that, that maybe we committed to them and need to follow through.
I, I want to be clear, that, what happened with that piece of property has nothing to do with my position on locating it northwest of town. I don't, I don't like the location of that property, but what we all went through with that piece of property, and know kind of what happened there, has nothing to do with my belief in that today, two and a half years later, the need is larger, more to the north, more to the west, catching the Catalyst Site.
So what does, what does that look like? Like, I don't know how that would work with a state property. I don't know how that works with that Stagecoach property, as far as...
Maybe they would do something like Downey Park did. I mean, Downey Park, we built a station on Downey Park's property, and they gave us a 100-year lease, or whatever it was.
That's what I would say, do you sign sometime?
Yeah, I mean, typically, whenever we've done that, we've, you know, we have a lease agreement with, with the village, and they, you know, I mean, and they're, they're a great partner. I mean, they've even come to the table and said, hey, when it comes time to add more people, because that station's not big enough to hold more than two people, we'll come to the table and help, you know, help foot the bill for getting a new station, because we want more people. And so it's, it's just signing a lease agreement with them. And I know, you know, from, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly what the current details of that property are. I know, when I've looked at stuff in the past, I don't remember, recall exactly what it says, but as long as it was a fire station, it was able to be used as a fire station. That's kind of the way the, the lease, or however it worked out there at, at, we've got several of our volunteer stations that were that way over the years, that somebody gave them the property, and long as it was a volunteer fire station, it was the fire station's property. But if it ever was not a volunteer fire station, it reverted back to the owner. It's, I believe it's kind of the way that is.
Just, just a crazy question. Just looking at the map, just, let's say, it was built where Stagecoach volunteers, and you had an issue somewhere, just say Pine Grove, or somewhere in that area, would that be the station to back up Welborn?
It would depend on, it, it would probably be the, it would depend on where it was at. If it was in the north, total northeast part of the, of the county, probably yes. They'd, they'd shoot across 132 and then hit 136A. If it was in Welborn itself, Station One in Live Oak's still going to be the quickest, quickest shot across there. If it was south of Welborn, McAlpin, or, you know, it's, it's all dependent upon the locations. Every map page in the community, in the county, has a primary, secondary, and third response from, distances from the station, so...
And the reason why I ask, because that's still bare there. We see that, and I understand what you're saying down here, but as you've grown 75 out that way as well, and things start happening out there, how do we position backups for all that as well?
Yeah. I mean, there is a need up there, but, I mean, I'm not trying to be selfish whatsoever. Heck, I got a station, I ain't got people in it. I mean, it's, it's nine miles to, to Downey Park from my house, and 11 to McAlpin, like, and I'm conceding that, hey, if we need to pump the brakes one more year, so that we fix the issue in our Grand Central Station, center of the county, that makes good business sense. So I'm, I'm not trying to be selfish and fight for putting people in Lurville, when I, everybody acknowledges the biggest hole we got's in Lurville. But we're also operating in a mobile home. I mean, there is a need north of town. When we build it, now we've got to figure out how to staff it. We've got ones that are built, that we don't have people in it. I mean, so it's court, horse, cart, cart, horse.
Well, I'm going to throw my two cents in here.
Okay, go ahead.
And I really ain't got a dog in this fight. But it makes no sense to put that fire station where we plan to put it. I'm way more in agreement of putting it at the Falmouth Station to cover that Catalyst Site. I just think that's money well spent. Appreciate you, Mr. Land, giving up here is to fix the McAlpin Station. That's very nice of you. But I just want to tell you where I'm at on it. So that's why we're here, and when we get to, get to where we have to make the decision on this, I just want us all to be in agreement, as much as we can.
And I will say, and our attorneys here, I mean, that's the one bad thing, I guess you could say about the Sunshine Law, is out of respect for you, I would love to sit and have a candid conversation with you privately about where I'm at, because I do acknowledge that you've worked hard on this for, I mean, you're the senior, senior commissioner on this whole board, but the only way I can talk to you about my feelings on stuff prior to maybe on this board is sitting in here in front of everybody on TV. So that kind of stinks. But I hate to have to break it to you like that, but, I mean, it's just a law.
I just, I, no, I agree with that. We would never want to do that. But I'll just say, I, I am not, I, I agree, Catalyst Site's going to blow up. I think, well, again, does it get to where we want it to get? Five years? You know, maybe more. We got our first real, signed the papers, bought the property moving forward, but we're still another year, year and a half from that being built. You know, I mean, I don't know. I just, I want to be smart about it. I don't want to, and I do have a, a bit of a, you know, an obligation to myself, and to the people that work with me, to, to get it up in that area. Like I say, I don't care about the property. Y'all know that. I just care about the area. Like, how many, how many have we done a count, like, the citizens, the amount of people, households, versus a Falmouth, versus a Stagecoach, versus where it's at? Do we know how many homes? I mean, people?
I've not, I have not done that study, because I do not have any software that, that would have to be something that 911 addressing would be have to, I mean...
You have more accidents on 18 you have to respond to, to the east or the west?
I mean, it's, the, the one thing about the Falmouth Station is it improves, it, it improves our, our interstate response, because it puts somebody out there on the west side that, you know, that's a mile from the interstate. The, the center station, if we build it up 129 somewhere, would be closer, but we're only, you know, we're only five, six minutes from the interstate and Station One now, so...
What about Boys Ranch Road? I mean, I don't care if it be, obviously, I fought for it to not even to be in my district. I mean, not purposely, but just the property was identified there.
Yeah. I mean, the only reason that I drew that circle in as Stagecoach is because of the, there's a current station there, and we have, I think we've got pretty easily, easy access to keep that property and build a station on. You know, like I said, really and truly, if you shifted it about a mile to the east, it would have the maximum coverage that it could have. It would just reduce the response time a little bit, because you'd have to go, to go south, you'd have to come back to, back to 795 and go south. Now, with, you know, somewhere, anything you come south, you, you bring it off the river, but you're overlapping either the city station or Station One even more than it already overlapped. So it, it, it really just, you know, it needs to shift just a tad to the east to get maximum coverage. But it, you know, like I said, nothing can, nothing that we do will cover the Catalyst Site unless we build a station in the Catalyst Site area.
There's...
No other location would.
Mr. Chairman, the last, the last two things I'm going to say, I'm going to be quiet and let the left side talk for a little while, is, number one, building it west of town, you pick up Swanee County's largest employer, Pilgrim's Pride. And, and I don't know how many times you go out there, but I've personally driven by there and seen that ambulance there more times than I wanted to count.
Of that 382 EMS calls, 70 of those are Pilgrim's Pride, well, Pilgrim's Pride map page, but there's not a whole lot in there. Pilgrim's Pride map page, but Pilgrim's Pride.
You pick up Swanee County's largest employer and a, and a dang good community partner to this county, already, with what they give back to us. Number two, when I was thinking about north, northwest, what I was basing on, you talked about rooftops, I was looking, thinking about the census. So we're growing less than 2% residentially? Norris, residentially? Right?
Wake up, back there.
So, I'm, I'm going to say it's like 2%, 2 and 1/2%, less, less than, definitely less than 5. So I want to say it's around 2. But if, if you, if you base your decisions today to the east of Live Oak, based upon a residential growth rate of 2%, what's that commercial growth rate going to look like at the Catalyst Site in 10 years? I would, I would be willing to put money on it that it's going to be greater than 2%. That, that was another metric, if you will, of what I was thinking, as long, as well as the Pilgrim's Pride. But that's my last two things for this topic.
All right. Commissioner Roble, you got anything to say? Mr. Perkins, what's your opinion on this?
Well, I think it's like moving it to encompass Gold Kids, and I was thinking about, I'm glad Commissioner Land brought it up, because I need to work it out there, and a lot of accidents do happen there, so I can see something in that area to encompass Gold Kids and the Catalyst Site. So I'm just on board with it.
Anything else?
I guess, have you spoke to the gentleman owns the little Falmouth Country store?
I have not. No, I, I did look up on the property appraiser, of who owns the property around us. Piece directly behind it is a big property owner that owns almost all the property around there. The same size lot as the station sits on now, to the east of it, is Fred Martin. And he owns, you know, same half-acre lot, or whatever, that the station sits on. And then behind, you know, behind is a, is a larger owner. I don't remember the name, I don't recall the name, but it's a, and then you got the corner piece where the store is, that's the Falmouth store.
Can we come to an agreement here, that maybe we look at the Falmouth location first, and just see what we can do there, can't do there, what that all looks like? And then if we can't do that, we'll move on to something else?
That's, that's what I was looking out of today, was some direction from you guys as a board, which, where you, where you wanted to go, and to give me an idea of what we need to work on, to come back with some information on what's even possible to do.
Mr. Hill, you good with that?
Yeah. What, what does it, I heard you saying, like, having, with, with the Boys Ranch having water out there, how does that affect, like, one of your fire stations? I mean, if you had one of those large lines supplying that station, does that help you at all? Is it not better?
It would help. If we had a, if we had a well large enough at a station, or we were on the water system...
You just need a wells, all you need for a station.
Yeah, like, if we put, basically, what ISO looks at, you've got to be able to flow 250 gallons a minute for two hours. So you're looking at 30,000 gallons of water. It's either got to be stored, or you've got to have a well that will pump 250 gallons a minute. If we had a water, if we had a water system or a well big enough at a station, anything within 1,000 feet of that would be the lower ISO. But you have to have the system, because you have to be within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant. So that was the reasoning behind my, you know, our request, when we put the line in from the water system down to the interstate, to plug those hydrants in along that line every 2,000 feet. All of those residences, you know, right now, there's not that many, but who knows what it's going to be 10 years from now. It's a minimal cost to drop a hydrant on a line when it's going in, and now, anything within five miles of a Welborn Station, that's 1,000 feet from one of those hydrants, which will be anybody along both sides of that road, are going to drop from a nine to a four. So...
The reason why I'm thinking is, we have those extra, if that's where this thing ends up, we have those extra wells at the Catalyst Site. That could be a fill, make that one of those fill stations, just for that purpose.
Right. And we, you know, we have, I mean, we have, you know, we have a hydrant at the water plant now, that we fill off of. If we have fires in that area, we can go in there and, and hook to it, or we run into, either that, or we run into, into bender holes, because it's easier to get in and out of bender holes than it is to unlock the gate and go in, in the water plant and everything. Sometimes we'll just run in there. But we'd have done water shuttles from that hydrant, when we had a major semi-fire on the interstate. That was closest water supply. We were running tankers to, to the water plant and filling up. So, but that's, you know, it, to, to get the insurance benefit off the water, you've got to be 1,000 feet from it, and within five miles of the fire station. And that's what is so crazy about ISO 5.1, don't matter. It's, it's got to be five or less. But, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't mean you have less service. So, all right, well, I...
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We've got to move along here. In the interest of time, the attorneys asked me to move, skip down to number seven, since Ms. Jordan's here, discuss the PACE loan agreements in Swanee County, status and opinions.
Okay. Just quickly, and I'll make this as brief as I can, the, if you look at your agenda packet that Mandy prepared for everybody, PACE loans is short for, let me pull it up here, private assessment clean energy loans, and several years ago, the Florida Legislature passed a law which allowed for ostensibly loans which were to... passed a law which allowed for ostensibly loans which were to aid in making your home or business, for lack of a better phrase, greener. It allowed for a, a loan, the interest rates have been about 10% or so, um, to be made to allow that purchase or to allow that improvement to be done. And the way that, for lack of a better phrase, the mortgage servicer is the tax collector. So, Ms. Jordan has been having to do that since 2015, when Swanee County first entered into its first contract with Florida Pace. I've attached a copy of that agreement. That's, that's agreement number 201586. And if you look at the first two pages of that part of the agenda, you'll see there, and I don't want to get sued for defamation by Florida Pace or any other pace, um, loan company, but essentially there are significant consumer protection issues that have been brought to people's attention with the pace loans. Significantly is that the pace loan is secured by your home. It's, the mortgage servicer is the tax collector, so if you don't pay that tax, you lose your home for taxes. And then, and this is just me stating the obvious here, in, there's a, there's no prepayment of the loan. So, for example, when you have a mortgage and you owe $20,000 and you want to sell your house, you can pay off that $20,000 as part of your satisfaction of the mortgage to enable people to sell their house. You can't do that in a pace loan. So, that means when you want to sell your house, that person has to take the house with the pace loan tax assessment on it. Throughout the state, people have been coming to the realization that perhaps the pace loans weren't what they were set out to be. In fact, in a significant number of counties, including Columbia County, you'll see there that consumer alert that they put out stating that they want nothing to do with these pace loans and that, we can get to it in a moment, but that the pace loans are now being offered to the citizenry of Columbia County over and without the, and in our local agreement such as one we have here. So, what I wanted to bring to the board's attention is just a little bit of bringing everybody up to speed with what the, um, the consumer alerts that have been going out and as to whether or not, I mean, to use the language that's in the Columbia County advertisement, they may be predatory. And we certainly, we currently have 26 citizens who are bound to these loans, and I know that Ms. Jordan, you know, it, it's putting her office in the position of being a mortgage servicer. So, we have the option, just recently, last year, we agreed because there was already the pace loans with Florida Pace to enter into agreement to allow two other servicers to come into the county. The good news is, as to each of these loans, that they each have a termination clause. So, we, although the tax collector would have to continue to service the mortgages that have, the pace loans that have already been made through the tax collector, the county has the right to terminate the agreement and direct that they not continue to be in Swanee County. And so, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and ask if there was any intent or request by the board for me to move forward with seeking either a revocation of those agreements or a way to, again, I'll just defer you to, you can see where the position Columbia County is taking.
Does everybody here on the board understand what that means?
Yes, sir.
And I, I had a meeting with both Ms. Jordan and Mr. Gamble. Mr. Gamble was a member of the commission back when these were passed. Maybe he could speak to how the, how the loans were advertised at the time when the commission spoke, decided to enter into that agreement versus how it has been in practice.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allen.
For the, for the sake of time, um, I'm okay with accepting the attorney's advice. I think that here recently, we did just allow two others to come in to do business because there was only already one or two that was authorized, so we did this board, well, maybe not this board, but I was on the board when we allowed, um, one or two others to come in as well, to level a playing field. I think there's only four or five, and we wanted to be fair. If two could do business here, we wanted the other two or whatever the numbers were as well. But, um, and the issues brought forth by our county attorney, um, that's kind of a hard pill to swallow with maybe some, there again, defamation, but maybe they're not the most informed when some of them enter into these, and I certainly wouldn't want anybody to jeopardize their homestead.
And when I was on the commission and this was presented to us, it was presented more on the lines of helping people that couldn't afford to repair an air conditioner or a hot water heater. I guess it does that, but it puts them, I guess, way behind the eight ball, so to speak. Think that you could lose your home over an air conditioner, or you could lose your home over a hot water heater. Because what we're seeing is that most of the time, these are people that are already struggling to pay their taxes as they are. Now, they're getting hit with, you know, sometimes an extra $2,000 or $3,000 on their tax bill for 10 years. That's putting them in a bad spot. And, you know, I'm going to speak for Sharon, but we had a meeting about it, and I think both of us would support you and give you whatever support you need from our offices to move forward with, um, you know, canceling these agreements that we have with pace.
Is this a floating interest rate on these loans?
I think it's a straight interest rate, but it's pretty high, I believe.
It, it is. They're contractual with the homeowners, but my understanding is they're around 10%. And I just, to make that 10% sink in, um, that's 10% and it's secured by a house, and it's, the mortgage servicer is the tax collector. Where there's no foreclosure, you simply lose your house for taxes in the normal procedure.
Yeah. Tax deed, tax certificate sold, two years later, they apply for a tax deed, and you either come up with the money or it's sold on the courthouse bill.
It's great if you're in the lending business, I guess, but...
It's very good.
Who wouldn't want guaranteed mortgage?
We actually have, I know Adam mentioned 26, I know we have 24 accounts right now. One of those is delinquent, and we're talking about homestead property, okay? They could lose their home if they don't pay these taxes. Per statute, we had to follow the rule and do everything. There is another, the last company or the last pace y'all signed with just recently, I know they're going to have at least one account. So, the quicker you move, the better, because they've already contacted us and they already have one account that's going to borrow your money from them.
That's pretty steep.
Thank you all.
It's, it's really not good.
One other thing I just need to bring to the board's attention because I know we're pressed for time. You'll note, if you scroll through it, you're going to see a complaint that is currently pending, and I know Ms. Jordan's well aware of this because this has become quite the hot topic in property appraiser circles. You'll see that case Pinellas County versus Florida Pace Funding Agency, which is the same funding agency that we have signed with, where they're authorized to do business. And I'm going to condense this to 30 seconds if I can, but essentially what Florida Pace did and its ancillary companies is they went to the, they filed a lawsuit in Tallahassee, got constructive service on every single citizen of the state of Florida by serving the state attorney in each judicial circuit, as well as the, um, the Secretary of State to ask the judge there to declare that they no longer need interlocal agreements to come into counties and offer pace loans and make property appraisers even in counties where there is no interlocal agreement with these pace companies to process those loans. That is being vociferously debated and lawsuits have been filed against it because, quite frankly, it doesn't make a lick of sense that you're going to get constructive service over the citizens of Swanee County by having served John Durret. And so, any, if we choose to revoke the agreements, I would just want to point out two things. Number one, if the decision of the board is for consumer protection purposes, we don't want to do this anymore. I think frankly, we're in a stronger ground than the counties that have never agreed to it because there's contractual language that we have with Florida Pace, which says, if we vote to terminate the agreement and notify them, they shall stop, which that language doesn't apply in the counties where there never was one. And two, just FYI, it may put us into, will be part then of, an, an ongoing issue I'll be bringing to this board's attention at that point will be, what is the status of, does pace apply? Can pace proceed without the county's permission or not? So, that's just ongoing litigation. But we'll be hopping it out of this frying pan and into that proverbial fire.
I'm good with it.
Everybody good?
Yes.
But, 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 and speaking of her thing, Mr. Chairman, the sooner the better. Is this potentially an item that we could speak about at 5:30?
Yes, if you wanted to authorize me at 5:30 to go ahead and draft a, I think you can vote to revoke it, and then I can do the paperwork.
Can we do that tonight?
I don't see any reason why not. I mean, it's...
Bring it up under Commissioner Allen.
Okay. And then, I know I'm next on the agenda. I can bring that up during my time tonight. I know we have constitutional officers in the back, so I'll defer to them.
Do we want to, so you want to skip over item three, go to four? Is that what you're saying, Adam?
Yeah, I can handle that. That's the most important thing that I have for the board. I really need to bring that in, but I know we've got other matters which we need to handle in the next 45 minutes.
Let's, uh, let's move on to item number four, discuss pace needs of government office, including tax collector, property appraiser, and clerk of court. Mr. Scott?
In talking to Ms. Jordan, uh, early on in my new tenure, I'm sure there are some needs that she has, which are real needs for space, and I know that we need to, need to keep the, where we can, keep the building officials close to and planning zoning, those folks, close to them also. I got, had some ideas about, and I floated them a couple of times, different places, about do we go buy a building and rehab it? And we got the Old Win Dixie, you got the Plaza, you got other options around. But, um, in, in talking to Ricky, he's downsized his, some of the, not his space, but his files. He doesn't need to move, doesn't really need the space. And we, there's been some talk, and again, I'm, I'm fast pacing this thing, and I know that the clerk's office needs some more space eventually to get some of their people closer to the courthouse. A thought I had was, I know that, and I haven't floated this off of Ms. Jordan, but just thinking out loud to move along, is I know that she already goes down to Branford some. Let me back up. We, we have been talking about some regional things like utilities, regional landfills, regional jails down the road. At some point, we're going to need to replace the jail, and downtown is probably not the place to have it in the future. But if we had a regional approach, and again, I haven't read this past the sheriff either, apologies for that, but down the road, if we had a regional jail, you know, we would, you know, tear down the old jail because you can't, probably couldn't retrofit that. Sharon may be uncomfortable, Ricky may be comfortable, but, but Sharon may be uncomfortable being in the jail. But, you know, demolish that, build a new building there down the road instead of investing in new property, renovating a space, and now we got to avoid downtown down the road. But what does it look like, you know, short term and to renovate some of the space down, down in Branford that we have where Sharon goes down already? And I don't know if any of the other conscious officers do also, but there at the old Pella Works facility, the old, I'll date myself, the old vehicle inspection facility back in the day. But can we renovate that so it's a nice space for her to move part of her operation there so she lightens the load of people coming up here? Again, that's, be a Sharon question too, obviously, but that might be a short term fix to help alleviate some of the pressure she's got here. The, the pressure she's got here is real. How can we fix it most economically fastest? And, and I'll just float that across. If Sharon wants to speak or something, more than welcome, but, um, but writing a, you know, million dollar check for a space and putting a couple million dollars into it and then pulling away from downtown may or may not be the way to go. So, I'll hush.
I'll speak for Greg. This one here, I have to save a time.
Well, I was going to ask you to come up anyway.
All right. I was in Branford today, actually, and left early to get here, so I could have actually stayed in my office till they closed today, but that's okay. Branford, we do not have full service there. So, we're there twice a month from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The Flowmobile comes to do driver's license once a month there. So, we don't have full service there, so we couldn't do everything there. So, moving part of us there or staying there or moving somebody there to be there five days a week really wouldn't work because I don't think I can get a driver's license Flowmobile there once a week. They're just, they're too in demand in other places. I did good to get on there once a month this year. So, that wouldn't work. We appreciate anything y'all can do for us. We saw over 200 people yesterday, and it was a federal holiday. So, we're averaging 200 or more a day. Now, that's customers that are pulling a number. That's not counting the people that are with them that come in there, you know? If they need two people to do a transaction or they just have to have people come with them. So, we're seeing a lot of people, and y'all have all been in there. You know what it's like, so, you know, and I appreciate Greg, you know, working and y'all working to try to find us a place or find us a larger facility. I know it's a challenge because there's no land around here to build on, and trying to find, you know, a building that you can do something with is going to take a lot too, but I appreciate the idea of the Branford, but it, I don't think it would work for us right now.
What does it take to get it full service like it is in Lavoque? What does that take?
Um, it would take, um, in Lavoque, we do birth certificates, driver's license, and that's all confidential stuff, and it's, it's a security issue. All that stuff has to be locked up in a vault every night. All that stuff is accounted for. All those ribbons and cards that print the driver's license, all that stuff is a, a big security issue. And plus the space to maybe have it, you know? We'd have to try to look at that building in Branford to see what we could, what we could do there. So, I mean, we can certainly check on that. It would be something that we'd have to go to the Department of Highway Safety to, to even get approval to, to do driver's license there.
Well, I'm just thinking short term here is what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it down there all the time. There's a lot of people that live on that end of the county.
Oh, yeah. We stay really busy down there.
But I was just thinking if we could open that up to a full, full-time office, maybe that'll, short term alleviates some of your pressure here in town to give us a chance to get the money and find a place and, because that's not going to be an overnight thing.
Oh, no, no, because I think I came to y'all two years ago with, with this issue. We can certainly look into it. I can look at the Department of Revenue. I mean, Department of Highway Safety is what we need to look, look at and see what the cost is going to be too, because there will definitely be a cost to, to move more equipment in there. They don't give you that free.
No, I'm sure of that. There's nothing free, but I, I personally would like to see that.
On top of figuring out the staff member that would be down there because it's taking a staff member away from, from the Lavoque office and, and that we need pretty much full staff most of the time, so. But we could certainly look into that. I'll, I'll, I'll do some research on that and review it.
Well, like I said, it's not, it's not a fix. I mean, I'd like to see it there always, but in the short term, it's going to take a while to get what you need...
Oh, yeah.
...to fix your problem. So, I'm just trying to think outside the box.
I know Columbia County has a satellite office in Fort White once a week that, that does driver's license. They, they have it where they can do driver's license there, but they're only there just once a week, so.
If you would, for me...
We'll look into that.
I would like for you to check into it.
We'll look into that because we do have full staff right now, but two of them are only part-time, so we're kind of, you know, busting at the seams trying to find a place to station those people too when they're not on the counter, so.
Well, I know you're, I know you're tight, because I've been in them any day and turn around and walk back out, and so just gonna wait for another day.
We have people leave and say, oh, I'll come back another time.
So, I mean, I know where you're coming from, I guess.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You've all been there, you've all been in there.
No, we've had these discussions for a couple of years now.
Yes, we have.
It's like Ms. Jordan said, it's just that property or that building presenting itself, that facility is the issue.
But we'll, we'll certainly just kinda review it and research it and do some talking about it and see what we can come up with there for a temporary fix.
Mr. Chairman, when you say vault, you mean like bank vault, like vault vault?
There's a vault bought in our office now.
Down there?
In our Lavo.
No, I meant Brantford.
No.
Is there, are there any bank buildings that are vacant?
No, not in Brantford, I don't think. Is there, frankly?
No.
Yeah, there's none.
I got a vault at the office, I'll give you.
Anyway, that was just a question. We gotta get going.
Okay, all right. Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
On that note, we did downsize by going digital and, and scanning all our files and taking 54 filing cabinets out of the office. So size isn't really an issue right now. The issue that we have is we need to be wherever Sharon's at, because a lot of the things that we do coincide with what she does. And if y'all do open her, a satellite office in Brantford, we want to be a part of that. I will say, speaking for probably her and myself, that would not be, I can't afford to pull staff out of our office in Lavo to put there, so that would be additional staff, and I'm sure her office is no different. But I believe if you had a full-time office there, you'd divert O'Brien South to Brantford for services, if they know it's there every day. I mean, some people still gonna come to Lavo, but you got a large population, and that's probably with the fastest growing population, and I think y'all probably seen that through working on your, your redistricting on what the largest district is nowadays, so.
Well, I know it's not a total fix, but I think it's a start.
It's gonna be your fastest fix.
Fastest fix and time to give you a plan to do something else.
Yes, you're not, it'll be 10 years before you build a building. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Ricky.
Mr. Chairman, let me just throw in just a couple of things real quick. Last week, the Building Department, I went with them to meet at first at Swan Valley Electric. The idea is to, to look, look at the permitting process for us and them, and what we can see of theirs and what they can see of ours, so, because a lot of times people come in to pull a permit and does not know what service they will have, what provider, for the electric. I say that because what they're talking about, we're talking about doing some different software for the Building Department, and we need to make sure that Sharon's office and Ricky's office can see that. I know with, now with the decals, it's important that we're able to see each other's stuff. And if we were to have satellite offices or anything, we need to make sure that software works so that everybody can see each other's stuff. And the thing that we've gotta make sure of is any upgrades we do, we've got it in a way that the people who need to see it in a secured way can see it. So I'll, just a point I wanted to make about that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
No.
We're gonna, we're gonna take five here in just a minute, let everybody go to the restroom. I had it in the trunk. Well, some of those we can move to another.
Well, we move it to the night afterwards.
Yeah. What's that? Mr. Hale, go hiatus on us. We're gonna go ahead, and he'll be here in a minute, we'll go ahead. Adam's gonna discuss authority to negotiate for land interest acquisition for county improvement projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna use the word that nobody likes to hear, which is eminent domain. People don't like it, neither do I, but we need to understand how that works so that this overall conversation makes sense, because one of the things that keeps, one of the things that happened during the initial transition period when I met with staff, members of the board, and others, was a very consistent frustration with the length of time that it took for rights to land to be cleared in order to move forward with development projects. And I think I've pretty much been able to put my finger on the pulses to the reason for it. But in the abstract, so that everybody understands the hammer at the end of this, if it has to get there, which it shouldn't if we do this correctly, is as a subdivision of the state of Florida, pursuant to Chapter 127 Florida statutes, the county has eminent domain power. So we do have the power to take somebody's property and put it to a public work if we feel that there's a need for it. Now, I want to address, and this is gonna become important when we get to the compensation part of it, there's a difference between the Florida Constitution and the United States Constitution when it comes to eminent domain, and it matters. So under the United States Constitution, it says that the government can't take property without giving just compensation. Under the Florida Constitution, it says that you can't take property without giving full compensation. And the cases say that there's a big difference between just compensation and full compensation. So if you end up in litigation about eminent domain and the taking of property, what the case law says when you're gonna give full compensation, what that means is not only do you pay the value of the property taken, you also pay what's called severance damages or the impact that that taking has on the rest of the property. So the easy way to think about that is, let's say you took a strip of land that's in the middle of a cornfield, and now the person's gotta take their tractor and go all the way around, well, that's a severance damage. You've impacted the value of the land as it surrounds, surrounds you. It also means that you pay the others, you're always going to pay the other side's attorney's fees, and you're always going to pay the other side's expert witness fees when you get into land valuation. My point being is that it gets, becomes very expensive to get into eminent domain litigation. That needs to be avoided. That's the reason I say all this. So the way things have been handled previously, and I know in several of the projects during my very first meeting, when North Florida Professional Services was here talking about different projects and where they were at in terms of getting the interest in the land to extend a roadway two feet or to pave it, is we need to get that interest from the property owner. And so the way it had been done previously, and I do know from talking to him that a significant time was spent with this, was that essentially the county attorney was going to these property owners individually with no authority to settle, to try to say, here's why it would be a good idea, why you gave us this interest. And because there was no authority to pay somebody for their interest in the land, that's what led to the malaise of, well, we're just, we're still working on it, trying to talk to people, when I'm gonna put it out there and I don't mean to cost the money, the county any money, if we're going to take an interest in land, we have to compensate them for it. It's not a question of whether or not we're going to, we are going to, it's a question of how much. And so it also doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and this is just me talking, but you'll see that I included at the end of this, the current Columbia County policy for the county to incur that as attorney time. Like, it doesn't make any sense for it to be the attorney who's the one who's reaching out to people to do those negotiations, both in terms of the hourly rate, as well as, quite frankly, if you're a homeowner, it can be quite off-putting where the first person you hear from is the attorney who says, hey, we're gonna come, you know, I, I, sometimes I'm not the most polite person when I say, hey, we want to take a piece of your land, that's gonna come across the wrong way. Especially when we're trying to pave your road, or, you know, everything we're doing is for the public good. So what, I would like to transition from the, the way we've been doing it to a, a new policy. I don't want to make it any more complicated than it needs to be. Again, if you look at the agenda packet, I included what's going on in Columbia County to show how corporate it can get in terms of a policy and deadlines and all kinds of stuff. And I don't want to be that structured, I like the nimbleness that comes with, that we still have while we're still this small. But I think what we need to do is create a land acquisition agent, as in, that's somebody who is authorized by the county with actual authority to go and talk to these property owners, and instead of trying to say, hey, can we get the property for free, or try to say, you know, here's what we are trying to do, we need to give that person actual authority and inform the property owner of their rights to compensation to enter into a negotiation with that property owner on the front end before we have to do all this. And that should speed things along quite a bit in terms of how long it takes these projects to move. Because if we have that land acquisition agent, that land acquisition agent can then go to the property owner, or property owners, let's say we have a street we're widening and we're gonna pave it, and so we need another two feet of, you know, off the road of interest. Well, we can have that land acquisition agent go out, talk to the five property owners, and we can know in a relatively short period of time who wants to work with us, who doesn't, or who doesn't, what they need, that sort of thing. And so what I'm asking the board to do is to authorize a land acquisition agent to have the actual authority to go out to these property owners, whose land is going to be affected by a county project, inform them of all of their rights, nothing should be hidden, and offer actual compensation in return for the interest we're going to get. So if you look at what I've got prepared as a draft, this is not final at all, of what I was thinking in terms of what we could do, in terms of the, creating that land acquisition or right acquisition interest. As to who that person would be, who would be the land acquisition agent, I've put in here, and again, all of this, you guys are free to change everything you want in here, but presumptively, it would be the county commissioner, whose district that project is in, so that would be the one who goes and says, hey, you're, we're trying to do this project, because quite frankly, that's already the way it's kind of happening now, where you're the county commissioner talking into the people where the project's gonna And if not the county commissioner for whatever reason, then give the county administrator the power to appoint someone to act as a land acquisition agent. How that person would be compensated, I, I, I don't know, but it can be relatively, it shouldn't be that big of a, of a deal. In fact, I do know that Commissioner Land, at one point before he did this, had that job for Columbia County. If you go to paragraph four, which is, for lack of a better phrase, the money paragraph of the proposed resolution, I've already figured out a change that I wanted to make to this from when I submitted it. So although we, all right, we'll have a land acquisition agent, but what kind of authority does that person have to negotiate with a landowner? Because we don't want it to be unlimited, and it needs to be full compensation, but it needs to be, or fair compensation, but, you know, we don't want to surprise the county. So what I put in here is a land acquisition may negotiate compensation up to 130% of the Swan County property appraisers listed fair market or just valuation, as listed for the current year. So that should, instead of 130%, I'm gonna make that, my proposal would be to make that 118% in talking with Commissioner Gamble at one point, or Property Appraiser Gamble at one point, how they do the just valuation and the discount that comes off the top of newly acquired property. If you do it at 118%, that should get you right at, if, if we were buying a piece of property, all of it, that would get them to 100% of fair market value in an arms-length transaction, or $2,000, whichever is greater. And the reason for that difference is, for example, if we're just taking, you know, let's say we're taking an easement, that's not gonna be worth, and we're not taking the whole piece of property, right? We're just taking an easement, or we're taking the right to install some pipe, or we're just increasing the right-of-way by a foot, there's not gonna be a whole lot of value there by calculation. And so up to $2,000. And then you see under B, where there may be facts or circumstances which justify compensation which exceed the $2,000. And speaking, at one point in time, I was talking to Commissioner Land about this, and he brought up a good example, where let's say we're gonna expand a roadway and a person, someone just put a pivot there for their farm, well, there's gonna be a significant expense that goes with that if that has to get moved, well, that'll be the county's responsibility to pay for that. And it would be if we were doing it any other way. And so authorize the county administrator to make that change up to $15,000, and then if we get beyond that, it would be within the purview of the county, of the Board of County Commissioners, if for some reason the circumstances are such. But I just desperately feel that we need to have an actual policy in place to have someone who has actual authority to negotiate with landowners to move forward and acquire these land interests, because where projects have gotten bogged down, and where, again, I heard it from unanimity in frustration of, why aren't these projects moving forward? And really, this is it. I'm just putting my finger on the pulse, is not having the ability to negotiate with a landowner and compensate them. And I'm open to any criticisms or changes that the county would want to make to the proposed policy.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing I wanted to add. When me and you met, I didn't take into consideration that if it's an ag property, that has an ag classification, the market value that shows is not the, is not the true market value, because that gets thrown into a different class of property, and we do not have to, we do not get audited on that through market value through Department of Revenue. It just gets a generic value that's a placeholder. All ag properties will show $2,000 in value per acre, where the actual market may be $6,000 or $7,000 per acre, if it didn't have the ag classification. So if you get to a property that you're trying to negotiate with and you need the true market value, you'll have to probably actually contact the office on, on that, if it has ag.
Well, and what, and what we can do is, this is kind of nimble enough where, let's say that came up, then that would be the circumstances where now the county administrator would say, okay, well, that's the fact and circumstance which justifies going above it.
Right.
But just for, have just a default, let's just keep the properties, let's keep this moving type.
Yeah, I just didn't want you to think when you got to an ag property of 200 acres and you were needing X amount of acres off of it, that $2,000 was our market value. That's just a generic placeholder that goes in that spot for all ag properties, because it gets reevaluated based on income approach, is what the ag classification does, so it's nowhere near market value.
Okay, no, 100%. And, and that's a perfect example of what, there does need to be some nimbleness there, but, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I will, we need to, we need to do better. I think all of us have projects that we need right of way or need something, and it seems like it historically has taken us years to get it. As our county attorney, Mr. Morrison, stated many moons ago, I did do this for Columbia County in my capacity as a Realtor, and honestly, I would prefer us to actually use a Realtor, I don't care which one it may be, Mr. Morrison could pick, because that's what I was at the time when I was doing it for Columbia County, was a Realtor. And, and they would have me do like a, like a, like a VPO, which is broker's price opinion, it's basically a short-form appraisal, if you will, save a lot cheaper. And would also look at the property appraisers, at the time it was Mr. Doyle Cruz over in Columbia County, look at his number, do that, go out, meet with the landowner, pretty much get everything agreed upon, and then hand it to the, to their county attorney, which was Mr. Martin Feigl at the time. Here it is, here's their name, number, street address, I've already spoke to them, they're good with everything. He would call them and schedule them to come in and sign the documents and get the money. It just expedited everything. If y'all wanted, want the commissioners to do it, I mean, I just assume not want to be tangled up into that.
I just know that, my only reason for thinking of the, the language is I didn't want to take anything from you all.
Yeah, no, no, I, I prefer not to, just so I'm not accused of, just stay out of that, let somebody else do it. But, um, the only thing that I, and I think I read it right, but I had limits, so if it was a primo, prime, commercial property, that was, obviously that fell into a whole nother category, where they actually hired, like I think it's in here, where they hired an appraiser, did two appraisals. I think my limit was like $15,000, as this thing says, was kind of, if it was above that, then I had to go see either the county administrator or the county attorney.
Well, one thing too, and maybe I can make the language clear here, so most of the time, let's take the- time, let's take the, the usual way this is gonna be brought up, is, and it's all the, for lack of a better phrase, small-scale projects relative to...
Yes, yes, I was doing 10th, quarter of an acre, half of an acre, little slivers along the paved road, minor stuff.
We're taking an extra foot along, so the, it's, the values just are not gonna be there.
No.
And we'll know well ahead of time, when the project's getting authorized, if we're gonna have to take a big piece of property, which will do all that.
So, in my previous, when I did it previously, so what they would do is they would hand me the, the design map or the acreage map, I would do my BPO, kind of hand it to them. It might be 30 days, it might be 60 days, and they would say, okay, we're good with all of those, here's the stuff, go talk to them, go meet with them, I would go meet with the landowner, whomever it would be, iron out any wrinkles, and then hand it back to the county attorney, all is done, they're ready. And all he's gonna do is call them.
And, and again, I'm truly, I just wanted to bring the problem to you guys, this is just an idea. The only reason of using the property appraisers valuation is, I'm just trying to save money, right? So that way, it's, we, we don't have to pay for an appraiser if we're using that, or however.
Yeah, 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 and that was how I was compensated, was me doing that BPO. So, I got 100, 150 bucks, only had to drive to the, to the house one time, to the property one time, that's how I got compensated to do it.
But I just want, this is a problem that needs addressing.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So, whatever y'all want to do, that's, I just want to shed a little bit of light on what I used to do.
I just don't want, I attach the Columbia County guidelines as, this is how in-depth it can, I don't want to get like that, right? We're not big enough that we need it that corporate. Something fairly nimble, I'd like to have a land acquisition agent, whomever you all want that to be, that person needs to have very clear authority to settle and be able to bind the county, so that way, when he shakes a landowner's hand, that's the deal, that's what we're gonna do, they can refer it, then, then whomever that person is can call me, I can call that person, I can go ahead and enter the contract, I can then bring it to the chairman of the board, we don't have to have a separate meeting, it gets signed and we're moving. And if, because it will be done on an expedited basis, we'll know in relatively short period of time, okay, we've got, if there's five landowners on this road, we, landowner one, two, three, and five, they're all on board, landowner number four is the one where, that's where I, as the county attorney, and that, that's when I start to get involved with, okay, well now we're gonna have to start looking at the more advanced options for securing rights to land.
Mr. Chairman, for the, the agent, will we need to do RFP or RFQ to secure that? Or how would we...
If it's gonna be a compensated position, yes, because that's gonna be a service. I mean, my thought process in, again, this was just literally to have an idea, so you guys could have it, where if it's someone who, for example, a county commissioner who were, my only thought process here was minimize expense to the county. So if it's someone who's already county employee, we wouldn't have to worry about it. But if it's someone whom we would hire, then yes, we would absolutely have to go through the normal process.
There's leaks.
Honestly, I was thinking to avoid, to expedite this, I mean, is it something that, I mean, I don't care if our attorney picks, picks the guy and run it through your office?
Well, I don't know, I think you're probably...
No, we're gonna have, it's a job we'd have to bid out.
You'd be just paying the attorney, he did it, he subbed it out.
Yeah.
I'm just ready, ready to go.
Yeah.
I don't care who does it, I don't care.
Is everybody pretty much on board with, with it, kind of how he's, kind of how he's got it laid out, except for, instead of a county commissioner having a real estate agent or somebody?
We can just, I'll just change it to, we'll put out a, I'll just make it into a land acquisition agent to be selected through the normal RFP process, and, and, I mean, and that person ultimately would report, I think, to you, Mr. Scott, but when the deal gets done, it would come to me for processing and going through, but, again, I...
Yeah, I just had a question, Mr. Scott, I mean, is there anyone currently on staff, as the attorney suggested, that we could just, I mean, could you go out there, I mean, whether it be a Realtor, if it's, if it's, I'd just be honest.
That's an arse, that's pretty good.
I was gonna say, you gotta have the right demeanor, you gotta have the right person, you gotta have all the facts and, and a little knowledge of it, how it works.
One, one of the things I would point out to having Mr. Land's, in his prior engagement as a Realtor, just not to throw my lot in, was, if you're gonna make money as a Realtor, you have to have the personality to...
Right, and that's why I questioned that versus, you know, someone already here, I mean, we've got a lot of talented people, but are they too covered up, do they have other things going on?
Nobody comes to mind that'd be the right, the perfect person, and...
I personally would like to see an outside source on it, just so there's no...
It does kind of take the, keeps it above board, if you will, everything.
Yeah, RFQ it or whatever, whoever, it doesn't matter.
What, and, and again, I just, are you guys okay with that? I think what I'll do, and this is just me thinking through a problem, is if the project, if, if any one piece of property where the offer would be more than the $15,000, that's gonna have to come before the board, no matter what. That way, I just, because again, most of the time, this is gonna get used in very small, so we'll know ahead of time if it's gonna be bigger, but I do think we...
I think, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think you just, just mirror whatever the county administrator's purchasing power is.
Okay.
To keep it simple, just, just mirror that, and then if he, if the county administrator, whomever it is at the time, signs off on it, then, that way it's simple, and it's not, it's not different, it's not, well, no, that's only this, but he's got, just whatever his limit is, they can go up to that with his signature, or the administrator's signature.
That'll work, and so, they'll get the land acquisition agent's signature on it, your signature on it, then it comes to me.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that works, I just need something, so that way we can process these things. All right, if it's all right with the board, I'll put together a proposed ordinance to create that position, and how we'll do it, and I'll put it on the agenda, not for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. I'm good.
How long do you think it'll take to discuss this county utility part of it?
Five, 10 minutes.
Item number five, discuss county utilities, Mr. Scott.
I just want to give you a quick overview of the situation we have with utilities, make sure everybody's aware of that. As, as you're aware, we've got utilities at the catalyst site, where we have one customer. At I-75, we've got 10 customers, both of water and sewer, we've got four that's inactive. We had a team that met the other day, and I appreciate them, them doing that, and a couple things that we need to work on, is currently we've got meters that are just manual, we have to physically read them every, every month. We'd like to transition to an automatic meter, so we can do it electronically, read it. The, we need to hire, we've got currently a contract with a provider, the subcontract with a operator to read, read the reports, turn them in, check the water, and whatever. And we're not getting the service from the agency or the company, we are from the, from the guy that locally that does the work, but I think we just need to hire somebody to just do that, in a part-time capacity, so they can be our, do that for us, and also do a, kind of be there to pick their brain about future things that we, that we need to do. We also need to find a vendor, or a series of vendors, that can, if something goes out, they can come perform for us, what we need to do to get the work done. I envision McDonald's at I-75, lift station goes out, and it gets really messy fast. And we need to make sure somebody can respond quickly, also look at contracting with, or do an interlock agreement with the city of Livock, so they might provide some of those services, or all those services, just so we can streamline that process and work together on that. And this is the, the consensus of that group that met from our team, that talked through these different, different things. Biggest thing is, as you're aware, we may need to do some retrofitting and whatever, some design, design issues that we've got, but to just get a better handle on where we are, where we're going, and move forward on the utilities. We're about to step into a bigger role with about $20 million worth of work, so we're gonna be looking at things differently and trying to, trying to get that, a handle on that before we even get there. Just so you, just so you're aware, on the, the wastewater facility at, at I-75, we bring in about $38,000, almost $39,000, and our expenses are about $76,000. Our water treatment plant, we bring in about, about $20,000 in revenue, our expenses $62,000, or $63,000. The catalyst site, water treatment plant, we're generating about $4,000 from one customer, and our expenses are about $90,000. But, understand, this is wopsided now, but as we bring in customers, that'll change. The other thing that, there's been some conversation of, is your regional utility, and we've been in those conversations, and we want to continue those conversations, and see what that looks like. The regional concept works well for other projects that we've seen around, landfills and such, but I think that's maybe a way to look at, I don't want to jump off and say that's the way we go, but we need to walk, walk through those steps and see if that's, because we got other neighboring counties in the same situation we are, that we don't need to have all the equipment, ever have all the equipment, we need to make sure that we've got the equipment we need, or we can call somebody and they can come help us out. So, that's an overview real quick of the utility situation, just want to be aware of that. I feel a lot better now than I did a month ago with utilities, we got a better handle on it, we're moving forward on it, and I just want to let y'all be aware, kind of, of the game plan moving forward. Any questions?
Just one real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Mr. Scott, I can't remember if you and I spoke about this, we're talking about some of those being, you know, wopsided there. Has any of the local Septank folks come to you about dumping?
We, we have the...
I thought we had talked about that one.
I've talked to several, several different people about having them dump, the Septank people dump into the system. We'll have to create the catching system to do that, figure out the way to monitor it, clean it, because of screening mechanism, so that roots and things and other things get stuck. Quite frankly, we've got bigger fish to fry right now, but something's in, on the radar that we want to work toward, we're set up where we can do that. I've heard some, some concerns in taking porta-potty waste because of the chemicals disrupting the system. Before we move forward, I want to make sure that we're not disrupting the system, we're helping the system, and we could generate some revenue, but I want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
And I don't remember the number, it was, it was over $100,000, well, one guy told me he was paying, I think Columbia County.
Right.
Maybe 130, I can't remember what he said, but something...
It's about, it's about $400 a load profit, but, well, that's, I shouldn't say profit, about $400 a load that we would receive in revenue, what it takes us on our end to monitor, get compensation, that kind of stuff, that's steps along the way.
And just, I didn't have, I mean, if it was a doable thing, I didn't have a problem with it until we got to the capacity level where it started interfering with folks hooking up and things like that, but...
Yeah, we, we got plenty of capacity, so...
Got you, fine.
Thank you.
Well, in the interest of time, and some of the commissioners, all of us, I guess, gotta change clothes here before the board meeting, can we move item number six and number eight to another workshop? Is everybody okay with that?
On six, if I could just get the commissioners that have any concerns about what we proposed already, to share with me privately, so we can make those adjustments and get moving on this, we just need to speed up our process, quite frankly.
So, everybody needs to get with Mr. Scott and share your concerns before we come back to this. We need to go ahead and set another workshop to finish this.
The only other thing is, is the EOC, and we can sort of do that any time. I would say, we got FAC coming up next week, we got budgets wrapping up, maybe the middle of July would be a, a good time, then maybe some other, other topics we need to talk about, too.
We also have the redistricting workshop.
Right, we've got the redistricting workshop, too, but that's gonna be with the school board at their, in their space, the 12th.
12th of July.
Right.
What about the July 5th, if we...
We could just come in a little bit early and...
Yeah, I was gonna say, we just come in a little early and finish it up.
We could do that, and I don't know what his, I mean, because you only got the two left.
Well, there's some more to add to this.
Oh, y'all have some more to add to, okay.
If it's, I would go back to the next meeting and not the 5th, I would, let's give us a little time to get...
So, the meeting after the 5th?
Right, which would be the Mandy.
I don't, I hope I'm gonna be here the 18th.
Before we...
The 18th.
July 18th, is everybody okay with that? Are you gonna be gone for that?
I would not be present for that, I can't be here.
Commissioner Land can't be here on the 18th.
Let us look at some options, and we'll bring them back into the commission.
There's one thing I need to do before we finish this up, and the engineer brought it to my attention, and we need to, this fire, whole fire station thing where it's proposed to go now, I need a consensus of the board that we're not gonna put it there, so we can stop spending money on that, if that's gonna be the case. So, I just need a consensus from the board that that is what we're planning on doing.
I'm good with that.
I'm as well. Mr. Chairman?
Listen, like I said, I'm not, I don't care about it being on that property, it's still just the area, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with that property.
Thank you. Mr. Marvel, Commissioner Perkins, you good with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I just need a motion to dismiss.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
See y'all in a few minutes.